We're not quite there yet, but thank you. Good evening. I'd like to open the Monday, December 16th, 2019 City Council Regular Meeting. Councilmember Batiste is excused this evening. And any of those that would like to join the council and I in the Pledge of Allegiance, please stand.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And with the concurrence of the council, I would like to make this special business item before audience comments this evening. Okay. ID 0608 is a recognition this evening for Councilmember Winterstein, who will be stepping off of the council in the January of this coming year. Paul, would you like to join me up at the lectern? So this is the second retirement in less than a week of one of our council members. And it's my pleasure tonight to present Paul with a token of appreciation from our city for his eight years that he has served with you all. I first met Paul somewhere around that part of the room about 10 years ago, when he, from Human Services Commission, and myself from Development Commission, were vying for an open seat on the council. He stood up and eloquently spoke about what his passions were and what he had hoped to accomplish, and so did I, and we didn't get picked. So, there you go. Try, try, try again. Paul ran for office the following election season and has been seated for eight years as representative for our city council. So this evening, on behalf of the city and our council, I'd like to present Paul with this token of our appreciation, a little piece of artwork for his home in recognition of his service. And also a certificate, the typical certificate. And so I'm assuming you'd like to say a few words.
I would.
Okay.
Thank you, Mary Lou, for those kind comments. Well, that was, did you hear that? That was something there, wow. Welcome, everybody. It was with a one-way ticket and one suitcase and just enough cash on hand to get to his destination in Ohio, when at age 19, in 1951, my father sailed into New York Harbor and onto Ellis Island, where he crossed the border into America. Yes, he was moving away from a life of hardship and an uncertain future, but more importantly, he was moving towards America for its greatness, for its ideals and promises, for liberty, freedom, and opportunity. He understood that our Constitution was the basis for our government. He was born in the terror of Nazi and fascism. Now he wanted to live and raise a family where liberty flourished, the law was the rule, and the leaders were chosen by the people. To the people of Issaquah, it's been an honor to have been selected by you to fulfill this sacred role of representation. Hundreds of you have come here and shared your thoughts and wishes for a particular matter. Some of you have spoken here literally hundreds of times, some of you only once. Thousands of you have sent emails. Every one of you chose to participate beyond just casting a ballot. You were living out one of those rites of citizenship, that greatness that my father came here for. Please know that I approached every issue with an open mind and the desire to do the right thing. You were the only master I ever served. To the city staff, professionalism, quality, dedication, I think you have a very difficult job. Staff people understand that. They serve directly to the mayor, but they have to help the legislative branch of government, too. Think about that, two masters. I'm going to miss you. I really am going to miss you. To my fellow council members and former council members as well, I can say, and this is a testimony to you, but also to everybody here and everybody who's listening, 100% of the time, all of you were always doing things for the right reasons. Even if we didn't agree on the outcome or the reasoning, I knew that everybody was working on behalf of the best and what they believed was best for Issaquah. I knew that everybody's always been fulfilling the oath that they take. That's a solemn, that's a solemn statement. I want everybody to hear that, and I believe that's true of most elected representatives I've met. So, thank you. To Mayor Polly, keep doing what you're doing, right? Be yourself, be your best. And who knows, maybe sometime we'll be able to work together on something in the future. I would like that. To my wife, Michelle, thank you for your unwavering support, for being the rock that has always been there, and for immersing yourself in some of the issues I was dealing with. Many an important vote I cast was influenced by your judgment, your sound judgment, your clear mind, your heart of gold. Thank you. I came to Seattle for a job out of college, but I chose Issaquah for the people and the place. I met Michelle here, we got married here, we raised our children here, our children went through the school system here. We volunteer to help our neighbors. We shop, and we eat, and we play, and we gather in community here in Issaquah. Some of our son's ashes are in the ground here in Issaquah. So regardless where the road will take me, I will forever be part of Issaquah, and Issaquah will forever be part of you, part of me. So thank you, Dad, for the courage to leave your family and come to America. It's been an honor to serve at the will of the people. And thank you to everyone here tonight. Your belief in our system of government, your acceptance for our institutions and norms, though at times may frustrate you, your unwavering belief to those same ideals that drew my father to these shores, your belief is the living proof of the greatness of America. Thank you.
The next item on this evening's agenda is audience comments. This is the time when audience members may address their counsel. The guidelines for audience comments will be displayed on the screen behind us. We have an overflow room open across the street in the Eagle Room as well, so we may have more people participating tonight than just those that are here in attendance in this room. Due to the number of those in attendance, and in accordance with Section 4.08(c) of the Council Rules of Procedure, I will be limiting audience comments to three minutes each this evening, in an overall duration of two hours. Up to two hours. You do not have to fill the entire two hours. Those who signed up will be called forward first. If you did not sign up and there is time remaining, I will ask for other speakers before closing this portion of the meeting. If you are here as part of a group, when you come up to the podium, please identify yourself, and the podium has been newly relocated to that side of the council chambers. If you are listening this evening and you are hearing comments that are compelling, please raise your hand so the council sees the level of support in those that are in attendance this evening. And I have a few additional announcements, since we have a rather complicated agenda this evening. One of the items this evening is a quasi-judicial decision. It is the SEPA approval. And as many of you know, the Providence Point Umbrella Association has filed an appeal of the SEPA determination of nonsignificance issued by staff for the comprehensive plan redesignation and rezone request related to the Issaquah School District property. The appeal hearing occurred on December 2nd, and the council deliberated the appeal on December 5th. Tonight, the council will be considering adoption of the findings and conclusions, supporting their decision to deny the appeal. This appeal is a quasi-judicial decision. When something is quasi-judicial, that means the council must act like judges, and may not hear any testimony or evidence related to the appeal outside of the December 2nd appeal hearing. This means the city council may not hear audience comments tonight on any issues of the SEPA appeal. This is clarified in Section 4.08(b) of the Council Rules of Procedure. For those not familiar with the issues in the SEPA appeal, in summary, they are whether the school district should have been the applicant for the comprehensive plan amendment and rezone rather than the city, whether the information on the SEPA checklist used to evaluate the potential impacts of the 2019 comprehensive plan amendment and rezone package was adequate and complete with respect to the school district property, whether the city appropriately used phased environmental review in this instance, whether the not-applicable answers to some of the questions on the SEPA checklist are accurate, and whether the comprehensive plan amendment and rezone of the school district property will have probable, significant, adverse environmental impacts. There is the opportunity to make limited comments on the second item on our regular business, which is the comp plan amendments and the Issaquah School District rezone. This item includes the redesignation and rezoning of the three Issaquah School District parcels at 228th Avenue Southeast at Providence Heights. Comments may be made on the rezone, as long as they do not reference the SEPA appeal or the other issues brought up in the appeal. So this has been a long process, and we, the council has heard a lot of information. Over the past month, they've heard from many individuals on the proposed Issaquah School District rezone at 228th Avenue Southeast, both in person and in writing. At the November 12th council study session, council heard from 29 individuals over a two-hour public comment period. Since mid-November, over 175 emails have been received by the mayor and the city council on the rezone. We've heard from those on both sides of the rezoning issue, in more or less equal measure. Those in favor of the rezone have stated the following: the need for additional classroom capacity; due to unprecedented residential growth, now we need to keep up with services; we are the only school district this size without a fourth comprehensive high school; and overcrowding in schools has significant negative impacts on students' learning. We have heard for those who are concerned that impacts associated with a stadium, such as noise, lights, and traffic, may have on adjacent neighborhoods; we've heard concerns over sufficiency of a buffer to screen between the senior community and school uses; concerns on traffic and transportation management issues, the dense use of the site, other environmental concerns. And we've also heard that there are unique characteristics of senior living that should be taken into account, such as sensitivity to noise and security issues. All that information has been presented. It has been heard multiple times in multiple forms. This evening during audience comments, if you have new information to share tonight, you are welcome to speak under audience comments. However, I will have to remind you that if you speak on any of the SEPA issues, either the city, I, or the city attorney will have to stop and ask that you refrain from speaking further on those matters. Having read my two-page monologue, I will now find out if we have folks signed up, and I'm sure we do.
Yes, I'll read your names in groups of three, and if you could please queue up behind the podium there for time's sake. So the first three we have are Tom Reed, Ron Thiele, and Ann Moore.
All right. Is this working? Okay. I'll have to bend over a little bit. Hello, my name is Tom Reed. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm in favor of rezoning for the Providence Heights properties to CFF to support a new high school. I am a homeowner and have lived in the Issaquah area for six years. I have two daughters, who have been in the Issaquah School District during that time, one at Skyline High School and one at Beaver Lake Middle School. Both struggle with overcrowding issues each day, which impacts their education and mental well-being. It is critical a new high school be built now to address this population growth issue. As a property owner, I love the natural beauty Issaquah has to offer. I empathize with the concerns of the Providence Point residents over the growth in their area. Why not make use of the property to solve the problem and not compound the problem with more residential areas, which was the original intent of the zoning before it was acquired for the school district? I would encourage Providence Point residents to work with the city of Issaquah and the school district to find a compromise for the greater good of our children's future. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. And Ron, you're up next. And there are some hands up in the air in support of the comments.
Good evening, and thank you. Dear City Council, I am Ron Thiele, Superintendent of the amazing Issaquah Public Schools. I want to thank you for the time and the attention that you have given to this important matter of new school siting and construction within the city. I know we've had lots of conversations, not about all of the aspects of building schools, and we truly appreciate that. I also want to thank Mayor Polly for her efforts to bring together all of the interested and impacted parties to discuss school siting and construction-related issues. Finally, I want to thank the Providence Point Umbrella HOA representatives for agreeing to several hours of conversations related to the specific projects the ISD would like to build adjacent to the Providence Point Retirement Community. These meetings have helped the school district better understand the concerns of the Providence Point community, and have informed much of our planning as we prepare to hopefully build schools on this site in the future. I know the council has heard and read a lot of testimony from citizens that want the district to build schools at both the Providence Heights property and the Talis property. I also know that you've received testimony from residents who neighbor these sites with concerns about the impact of these projects on their immediate neighborhoods. I know the council has received my letter as well, outlining a number of commitments that the district has made to help address some of the issues raised related to vegetated buffers around the Providence Heights property, stadium issues specific to that property, and traffic concerns related to all future school construction and operations. Please know the Issaquah School District is committed to being a good neighbor, and will work in good faith with our city partners and community neighbors to do what we can in order to help our schools integrate nicely into the neighborhoods in the community we serve. Now, I feel compelled, as the Issaquah Superintendent, to share my strong belief that if we are allowed to build the school's plan for the Providence Heights and Talis properties, that they will be tremendous community assets, serving students and our broader community for generations to come. We have amazing students and staff doing incredible things at all of our schools, and every day I see and hear stories about the students that fill my heart with pride and joy. I just want to remind us all that as we use our best creative thinking to help address concerns about the siting and construction of schools, that we don't forget that we have students and staff having to address issues of overcrowding every day, and they've been doing so for years. I will also note that our issues of overcrowding are only getting worse.
Your comment period has reached its end. Ron, do you want to sum up?
I will sum it up and just say that time to build these voter-approved schools is now. We are experiencing construction inflation, and we need to get these schools built, and I look forward to working collaboratively with all of you and our community going forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Lots of hands in the air. Ann?
Thank you. My name is Ann Moore, and I am on the school board for the Issaquah School District. I already spoke before, so tonight, actually, what I would like to do is read the letter from King County Executive Dow Constantine to President Tole Martz, which also copied Superintendent Thiele, which is why I have a copy of it, because it recognizes the hard work between the city and the school district, and encourages the city and the district to a resolution of our issues that would allow us to build on the Providence Heights site. So it is addressed to, it says, "Dear Council, President Martz, I write today regarding recent and upcoming actions by the Issaquah City Council that will determine whether the Issaquah School District can move forward with a comprehensive high school and an elementary school at its Providence Heights site. I recognize both the city and the district for working together over the past several years to successfully implement the recommendations of the 2012 King County School Siting Task Force, which were adopted into the county-wide planning policies. The task force stressed the need for cities to help identify alternate school locations so that districts could forego their rural sites. The city has been a leader in this effort. Since the task force completed its work, the district has sold a large rural school site, successfully passed a critical bond measure to facilitate the purchase of urban school sites, and used compact school design and other innovative siting techniques to develop new schools within the city. None of this would have been possible without parallel supportive work by the city to update the Issaquah's development regulation in support of these new siting concepts. The city's and district's actions are a model of what collaborative planning and school siting can look like in King County. The district has clearly benefited from this collaborative work, which has resulted in schools being sited in the communities where students live. This has reduced the transportation and other impacts, and enabled schools to be the focus of community building. The continued success of our school siting policies is dependent upon strong partnerships between local jurisdictions and school districts. The district has overcome multiple hurdles in utilizing the Providence Heights site. I'm aware of the ongoing negotiations between the city and the district. I encourage both parties to resolve any remaining issues and to identify a pathway for the district to utilize this site, in accordance with the recommendations of the task force and the county-wide planning policies. Thank you for your continued leadership on this critical issue. Sincerely, Dow Constantine." I appreciate King County Executive Dow Constantine's recognition of the collaboration between the city and the school district, and his encouragement of our development of the Providence Heights site for our new high school and elementary school. So I please ask you to approve the comprehensive plan, including the redesignation and rezone of the Talis site and the Providence Heights site to community facilities-for-the-development of our schools. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ann. Tisha, lots of hands in the air. Tisha, can we have the next three names?
Yes. Sidney Mullings, Allison Kerth, and Casey Stuckey.
Hi, Sidney. You're good to go.
Hi, how are you? Hi, and thank you for allowing me to speak tonight in support of the redesignation and rezone of the school district properties and community facility facilities. This includes a school site in the Talis community and the Providence Heights school site. My name is Sidney Mullings, and I'm the newest elected member of the Issaquah School Board. I'm an Issaquah resident, and I'm a proud parent of two children in the Issaquah School District. I am genuinely thankful for the ongoing and engaged public discussion and positive partnership to create solutions that benefit our awesome community. My family moved to Issaquah in 2014, and has greatly enjoyed the high quality of life in Issaquah, and my children have thrived in the Issaquah schools. Certainly, as a school board director, I have a vested interest in advocating for the thousands of children within our district. As you've heard from many others who have come to speak before you, the Issaquah School District is in great need of additional classroom and multipurpose space for elementary, middle, and high school levels. The district has completed an exhaustive search for suitable locations and acquired the last remaining parcels in line with the wishes of the voters. In 2016, well before I ever imagined that I would become a school board director, I voted in support of that very expansion. Now the time has come to make good on the promise to the community, make that real by completing these facilities. I fully understand and respect that the personal impacts of the change have, may bring. I want to share this evening how this impacts my family. I have an eighth grader at Pacific Cascade Middle School. She will go to high school next year at Issaquah High School, which is already overcrowded. Since much of the dialogue is focused on high school to date, I thought I would shift the focus a bit. My fourth-grade son is a student at Grand Ridge Elementary. His school is a vibrant and warm community. Given the number of students, my son and all of his peers don't go to kindergarten at Grand Ridge. All five- and six-year-olds within the Grand Ridge attendance area board buses and attend kindergarten outside of their neighborhoods. Even with sending kindergarteners off-campus, my family has experienced our kids in portable classrooms for multiple grades, my daughter being in portables for both fourth and fifth grade. I not only have a child that attends Grand Ridge, but my sister also works there. When our family relocated to the West Coast, we brought with us a highly skilled artist and educator. My sister runs, is the site coordinator for the before and after-school program at Grand Ridge. I'm sure that you're aware, before and after-school care is in great need in our community, with many families struggling to find high-quality enriching programs for their children to allow them to work. The program at Grand Ridge right now has over 200 families waiting on the list. I ask that you approve the city administration's recommendation, and the school district's request that the school sites be redesignated and rezoned as community facilities-for-theories, so that our community will have adequate and safe school facilities that we desperately need.
Thank you, Sidney. Lots of hands in the air. I have Allison?
Yeah.
Okay. Allison, and then Casey. Okay. Thanks, Allison. I have another Allison.
I was all nervous. My name's Allison Keith, and I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I am a resident. We own a home in Clahani, 4242, 246th Place Southeast, Semenage, 98029. I'm a mom to two kids. I have an eighth grader at Beaver Lake Middle School, and then I have a second grader at Endeavor. Both my husband and I are really involved in the PTSA. He's the popcorn chair, he's the popcorn man at school, and he's quite popular. And I have chaired programs, and I volunteer. In fact, I didn't realize I was wearing my Endeavor shirt until I got here. I volunteered in the library this morning. New housing development is overwhelming in our district. The schools are already maxed out. There are students, I've heard, at Skyline that can't eat lunch in the lunchroom. They eat them in the hall, because there's no space. And, I mean, it should just be obvious to everybody that we need a fourth high school. The Providence Heights location is the best location, from what I understand, it's the only location. There aren't other viable options, and we need to make, we just need to make it work. Even our newest schools that we have are using portable classrooms to add instructional space, but these mitigations do not add more cafeteria space, more library space, or more specialized instruction space. We're just experiencing growth, it's not up for debate, and we're already past the time to invest in more capacity in our schools. Schools are an investment in our future, and we can't let the kids down. So, we need it. I'm here to support the schools.
Thank you, Allison. And some support, Casey.
I think that's the right height. Typically, they're too tall for me, but, my name's Casey Stuckey. Currently, I'm working as Assistant Principal at Pacific Cascade Middle School. I'd like to thank the city council for your serious consideration for rezoning and the approval to start building our new schools. My wife and I have worked in the Issaquah School District for 10 years. Well, she has worked 11, I've worked 10. She likes to remind me of that, too. And she can't be here tonight, because she's with our five- and seven-year-olds, son and daughter, who both attend Sunny Hills Elementary. We got our start in education through Issaquah, love the school district and love working. But we both have seen the impact of our large and crowded schools as educators and parents. Currently working at Pacific Cascade as an Assistant Principal, looking at further enrollment and future enrollment, I mean, we are going to have roughly 50 more sixth graders next year than we have this year. In a school that's already, in my opinion, and working through it, large and overcrowded at times, it feels. So what that feels, what that means, we have to make some really tough decisions, one being our impact program is our after-school care, that was referenced earlier. That's where a lot of our students stay after school, because their parents can't pick them up, working, and have to be picked up at a later time. They are currently in a portable, and might have to move out of that portable to make that a teaching space. And that's a meeting space for them to sit, talk, play games, read, whatever it may be. And we might have to make a tough decision and move them out of that space. Locker situation at middle school is always interesting, but our overcrowded hallways plays a part in that. We do not have enough lockers for 50 more students, I can tell you that. Next year, we're going to have to look at where we're going to put those lockers, or if we use lockers. I used to think that middle school kids used to run in the hallways, just because they're middle school kids, but at times it is to avoid, and when I do talk to students and sit down with them, is to avoid the rush, and they refer to it as the rush in the hallway, so they don't get caught in it. Currently, we run three lunches every day, and it is a little much for some of our students who are impacted with the noise. It's not like the Who's playing in our lunchroom, but it is loud. So we've had to create quiet spaces for our students that, you know, need to go somewhere where they can sit quietly and talk to some of their peers. On a personal side, when I do talk to my son at home, he does wish that he could eat hot lunch more and have nachos, it's his favorite, but he's afraid to stand in line for a long period of time, because he doesn't get to play with his friends or socialize.
Your comment period is over.
Yes.
You can finish up, Casey.
So to leave and end, as a parent, as an Assistant Principal in the district, I think it's, you know, our responsibility to, we need the schools built, because our responsibility to provide a space- he doesn't get to play with his friends or socialize.
Your comment period is over.
Yes.
You can finish up, Casey.
So, to leave and end, as a parent, as an assistant principal in the district, I think it's, you know, our responsibility to... We need the schools built because our responsibility to provide a space where every student feels valued and has a connection with their peers, community members, staff members on different levels. Thank you for listening tonight.
Thank you, Casey. Lots of hands and support. And the next three speakers, Tisha? Amy Hess, Harry Stauffer, and Gretel Von Bongen.
Hello. My name's Amy Hess. I have lived in Issaquah my whole life, and I... Sorry. Calm down. I have two children in the Issaquah School District. I'm an educator in the Bellevue School District, and I have lived two blocks from Issaquah High School and Issaquah Middle School for the last 20 years. I've lived here my whole life. Even both my parents are Issaquah High School graduates. So, just major community member and all out for these Issaquah schools. My mom, Darcy Strand, worked for Issaquah City and the Issaquah School District and has retired since last year after 32 years of service. I just love this small-town feeling that we have in Issaquah, and it really does feel like a small town, but unfortunately, it's just, everyone loves this small town, and we really, I'm in favor of building another school. It is just so important to our community. Our student population is being pushed into our road infrastructure in this downtown area far beyond its capacity and its original purpose. Our downtown area was never expected to house this many people traveling to this one little area every day, and let alone the passing Hobart Road traffic that happens on a daily basis. So our infrastructure is just overwhelmed. Our new high school would relieve the downtown area of about 1,000 kids a day, and I feel the Providence Point Hill is far more capable of holding the traffic of one more school as opposed to this area having three large schools in it. The Providence Point Hill has roundabouts and turning lanes and all the things we don't have here. And then as an educator for the last 20 years, and I'm in Woodridge Elementary School, we got, we had a new school built last year, Wilberton, and it took 300 kids from our school, and it is just a world of difference in our school. Building relationships and the social-emotional learning in schools is just top priority. If you cannot build relationships with your students, then you just can't teach them. And this overcrowded high school, my son comes home and says, "You won't even believe the hallways and the rush that happens." And I just, it's just so scary for the first year of his freshman year. He was just so overwhelmed. So I just think the impact of having another high school would really affect our students and our community for decades to come, and I'm done, right? I can tell. Thank you for allowing me to speak today.
Thank you, Amy. Tell your mom we miss her.
I will.
Lots of hands up in the air. Harry's not. Gretel? Did I say it wrong?
It's like Hansel and Gretel.
Gretel. Mm-hmm. There we go.
My name's Gretel Von Bongen. I live at 684 Northwest Holly Street in Issaquah. I'm a neighbor of an Issaquah school. And I'm here to speak to you today because I am a proud teacher, 18-year resident and parent in the Issaquah School District. I've taught biology at Skyline High School for 18 years, and I absolutely love my job. In addition to being a nationally board-certified teacher, I've received national recognition for my work, including an Einstein Distinguished Educator Award, and I was honored by President Obama with the Presidential Award for Excellence in Math and Science Teaching. I'm not here to boast about that. I'm here to share this with you because it's important to me and my colleagues that you hear from experienced, dedicated, and professional educators who make up the Issaquah School District faculty. Educators, especially science and math educators, have a choice about where we work. I have continued to choose to work in Issaquah in part because of the supportive community and in part because of the state-of-the-art facilities. However, as you know, and I witness daily, our school facilities are stretched beyond their capacity. Overcrowding affects our students and staff, and I urge you to permit our district to build the high school and new elementary on the 40-acre property adjacent to 228th. Due to lack of adequate space, teachers must share classrooms at all three high schools, which results in complicated schedules, crowded classrooms, and educators spending considerable energy dealing with issues related to facilities management. We've converted closets to office spaces, and I often meet with students in the hallway with no privacy. At elementary schools, we have multiple lunch periods in order to mitigate noise and crowding, and students who are sensitive to overstimulation struggle to focus in spaces that are too full of people. We are pressed for sufficient space in all of our middle schools as well. I've already witnessed the consequences of overcrowding in our school. My own son, who's a freshman at Skyline, cannot get his lunch in time and will visit my classroom in order to get a snack. Additionally, we had a really exceptional biology student teacher at our school two years ago who elected to not take a job with the Issaquah School District because she could have her own classroom just half-mile, mile away at Eastlake High School. In a competitive teacher-job market, overcrowding matters. I will conclude by underscoring the need for these buildings in a community that is already overcapacity and that continues to grow. Help us keep the high-quality experiences for our students that we've been able to provide by allowing the construction of these new and much-needed facilities. Thank you.
Thank you, Gretel. Lots of hands in the air. Our next three speakers, Tisha? Kristi Hardy, Rick Aramburu, and Roberta Brown.
Hello. My name is Kristi Hardy, and I've been a math teacher at Issaquah High School since moving to Seattle from Texas in 2011. I have a master's degree in education from the University of Washington, where I specialized in curriculum and instruction in math education, and I'm also a nationally board-certified teacher. Despite living in Seattle, I have chosen to continue to work at Issaquah High School since I moved here because I value the community and the students that I serve. I am here tonight to help you understand how overcrowding negatively affects our students, teachers, administrators, and staff at Issaquah High School, and to urge you to permit our district to build a new high school and elementary school on the 40-acre property adjacent to 228th Street. Having grown up and taught for a year in Austin, Texas, I can assure you that Issaquah High School is an outstanding place for children to learn. I was and have continued to be impressed by the dedication, support, and community that exists within the school. I have only a handful of downsides to working at IHS, and they all have to do with overcrowding. Since joining IHS in 2011, my average class size has ranged between 28 to 32 students. I am a general education teacher. I have no paraeducators. I have no assistants in my classroom. It is me and 28 to 32 high school students, including a former one back there. I am a teacher that likes to get to know students individually. I like to talk to them on a regular basis. In a class of 32 students, this is often impossible. I am a teacher that likes to differentiate instruction and give students the individual support and guidance they need. In a class of 32 students, it is a huge challenge to provide this, and students find that getting daily one-on-one help during class is unrealistic. I am a teacher who likes to return graded work promptly so that students can receive feedback on their work and begin making improvements. My planning periods are not long enough to grade 155 quizzes and tests, so often I end up taking these assessments home and lose quality time with my husband. The research around class size clearly shows a strong correlation between lowering class sizes and improved student understanding, and should be reason alone to build an additional high school so that our class sizes can be reduced and teachers can reach the students they were brought here to teach. Another negative consequence of overcrowding at IHS is the unfortunate circumstance we find ourselves in this year, which is sharing classrooms. We do not have enough classrooms at our school to accommodate all of our students and a seventh-period school day. While sharing classrooms may not sound terrible, let me paint a picture for you. I currently teach five classes out of a seven-period day. Throughout the day, I am in three different classrooms. As I travel to each room, I have to take with me textbooks, materials for myself and my students, calculators, quizzes, tests, anything else that I might need for myself during that class period. My five-minute passing period between classes is spent shuffling things from room to room, trying to reset, and hopefully, if there's time, going to the bathroom. I find myself utterly exhausted by the time lunch rolls around and more so at the end of the day.
You've reached the end of your comment time.
Okay. My summary: Issaquah High School was built to support 1,800 students, and we are currently serving over 2,200. We approved a bond in 2016 to build new schools, and the time to do it is now. If we want to preserve the quality educational experience that Issaquah has been known to provide, we need to allow the construction of these new and much-needed school buildings. Thank you.
Thank you, Kristi. Lots of hands in the air. Rick, come on up.
I'm Richard Aramburu. I represent the Providence Point Umbrella Association, and I'm here tonight to ask the council to affirm the recommendation of the Policy Planning Commission. Policy Planning Commission held three hearings. They extended over a long period of time. Considerable testimony, expert testimony, was submitted by a number of people, including Providence Point. The conclusion of the Policy Planning Commission was that the properties are not suitable for a high school. So the question, I understand the concerns about education and crowded classrooms and those issues, and people who are concerned about that need to look to the administration to determine whether the administration is doing enough. But that's not the issue for the council. The issue for the council is twofold. One, is this the appropriate site for a high school? Policy Planning Commission says no. All the evidence indicates no. If it is an appropriate place, what can we do to make sure that the high school that might be built at that location is one that can be compatible with the neighborhood? No one has discussed that issue tonight, and there's been no discussion of that issue by the school district. I wrote the council a long letter today, including some supplementary materials. I apologize for the length of the letter and its timing, but I did not receive the staff report, which was one page long, until Friday afternoon at 3:47, which is unfortunate sense of timing. The other thing that hasn't been answered is when we were all here, many of the people in this audience were here on November 12th, council members asked, "We want to have more information about materially detrimental." That's one of the criteria. Is this school going to be materially detrimental to the surrounding neighbors and to the Providence Point community? There's not been an answer to that. Despite the fact that everyone on this council asked that question, there has not been an answer to that. We have answered that question. It is indeed materially detrimental. Providence Point Community has been at its location for 35 years. It is a retirement community that benefits from the setting that it's in, from the dense woods that surround it, that were a part of this proposition. So, we ask that the proposal be denied, that the proposal and the recommendation of the community, of the Planning Policy Commission, be accepted, and that if you are to accept the idea of moving forward, it must be with firm commitments, not vague promises, but firm commitments to move forward to a proposal and a setting that will be mutually beneficial to all. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Roberta? And lots of hands in the air. Roberta?
Good job.
I'm going to remind you to do show your support by raising your hand, but as much as we can minimize conversations and shout-outs, it helps everybody hear what's going on. So, thank you. Roberta?
Hi, yes, I'm Roberta Brown, and I live at...
Roberta, I'm going to get you to pull the microphone closer.
Yeah, thank you. A little shorter. I live at 22719 Southeast 43rd Court in Issaquah, and I'm here, I was going to speak to some issues, which now I understand I cannot. So I just, this is going to be very brief. I just want to say that I've been a teacher here in Washington for 45 years.
Roberta, I'm sorry I'm interrupting you again. Can you address your comments to the council?
Of course.
They're your primary audience tonight.
I love teachers.
I know, I can tell. I can tell. Thank you.
I'm a teacher, yeah. So, in any case, I've been a teacher here in Washington for 45 years. I love teaching. I love schools. I understand the whole issues. And so I am going to limit my two minutes of comments to the fact that we do not need a stadium here if we should have a high school. My first comment related to that is, has anybody here, schools, city council, asked the kids? What do the kids want? And I'm talking kids in grade school and high school. This is a generation not to forget. In 10 years, we have the tipping point of global warming. These kids, I know I'm going to sound like a freak, but I'm going to do it. These kids are going to be more worried, they already are, about whether they should have children or not than about whether Skyline won the last football game. It's just real. This is where it's at. We've got to get our heads out of the sand as we face these buildings. If I did a little math today, and there was back in an earlier review, I've gone to every hearing here, by the way, hallway, and it's really fascinating, there were, there are 48,000 diameter inches of trees up here. And I did some math. That represents, if you took each tree, that represents 80,000 years of tree growth. Okay, ask a sixth grader or a fifth grader, what would you rather have? A stadium for a few testosterone-heavy guys in high school, or would you like, you know, a little path with some trees? So, in any case, I would like to recommend that we keep, at the moment at least, for this year until more is done, that we keep the Planning Commission's recommendation not to grant a high school until further studies are done. And one last thing with relation to that, I did write quite a letter, which you guys got, but we know that within less than six months ago, at least half of the land in question was covered by buildings known to contain considerable asbestos in the concrete and throughout the interior.
You've reached the end of your comment period.
Yes, and it is extremely toxic, those things. To my knowledge, nothing has been done. So let's please, as we consider this, and I asked the city council, to think about the kids, both in terms of what they will want 10 years from now, will they want a stadium, and do we need one more year just to check on those toxins before we put kids in these cookie-cutter prisons for 10 years full of toxins? Thank you.
Thank you, Roberta. Lots of hands and support. I need another three names. Tisha?
Irene Rice, Ron Imhoff, and Sue Ann Boland.
Irene, making her way up.
I'm Irene Rice, and I live in Providence Point, and I'm on the umbrella board that brought the suit. What I'm concerned about is that tonight, that you will brush off the recommendation of the Planning Policy Commission, that Parcel III of the Providence Heights property be designated CF and rezoned to open space. That buffer is needed to protect Providence Point from the activity, noise, and light, and traffic next door. The December 10th site plan that Issaquah School District uses, 60 feet along the boundary of Providence Point for a buffer. That is an approximation of what the PPC was trying to accomplish. However, removing all of the mature trees and replacing them with trees that are six to eight feet tall means it will take years to grow the buffer. Since that is only one of the 50 iterations they told us about, that we've heard suggested by the Issaquah School District, we have no assurance that that part of the plan will remain when the site plan is submitted for permitting. The code for building schools up to seven feet from the property line and the ability to cover 90% of the... to cover 90% of the property with impervious surface does not inspire confidence in what is promised with the December 10th iteration of the site plan. The multiple comments from principals and teachers and family members at recent city council meetings about the overcrowding of Skyline and Issaquah High Schools has been impressive. There is no doubt that a new high school is needed desperately for the population growth in this area. The plan for a high school at Providence Heights property could be made much more palatable if there was assurance of a substantial buffer separating the retirement communities.
Thank you, Irene. Ron? Lots of hands in the air.
Hello, my name is Ron Imhoff. I live in Providence Point. I think there are issues that need to be addressed before rezoning Parcels I, II, and III in the 2019 comprehensive plan. One, the placement of the school is not a benefit to the students that live in Issaquah. It is no closer for them than either of the current high schools. In fact, the greater benefit is to the city of Semamish, who not only gets another school close to their student population, but also does not have to forfeit any property or property tax revenue to get it. The comprehensive plan already is needed to be corrected by the city council for Parcel 12, from what the city administration proposed. The city council rightly understood the impact possible zoning that parcel CFF would mean, could have. So three, the city administration pulled the Burisma properties from the comprehensive plan because they did not have a worked-out plan for the properties. The school district appears to claim their plans are not worked out either. Four, the Planning Policy Commission recognized a serious issue with the rezoning of Parcels I, II, and III. Whether they made the correct recommendations or not, there are issues that need to be addressed to keep the property from being overdeveloped. Five, if the Parcels I, II, and III are rezoned to CFF, it opens up those parcels to all sorts of other uses, including jails, office buildings, hazardous waste storage and treatment facilities, shooting ranges, et cetera. I doubt the city council has that in mind by their essentially equivalent zoning change. There are other potential rezoning options for Parcel I, II, and III that would allow a high school without allowing other unintended uses. And the Issaquah School District has proposed on their website possible commitments to buffers around the property. Without the city council including stipulations in any rezoning, there would be nothing that could be done to enforce those commitments. So therefore, please consider these points and don't rezone the property unless enforceable conditions are placed on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Lots of hands in the air. Sue Ann?
Good evening. I'm Sue Ann Boland. I'm the resident of Providence Point, and I'm also the president of the Providence Point Umbrella Association. Tonight, you must make the difficult decision to approve, deny, or delay rezoning of Providence Heights property for schools that will include a high school and an elementary school. Part of the rezoning criteria is no detrimental impact to the surrounding neighbors. We all understand the urgency of the schools needed to address overcrowding in the classrooms in Issaquah and Semamish. However, at this point, there are still significant concerns from the community that have not been addressed. In the research I've done, I've not been able to find any example of a high school that is sighted on a property that's surrounded entirely by a retirement community, an assisted living center, and a nursing care facility. We believe there are mitigations that can be put in place that would be acceptable to all parties, but at this time, there is not a commitment from the school district to do that. The 60-foot buffer mentioned on the most recent website and site layout is really much narrower along the property line because the 60 feet includes in the calculation some large clumps of wetland trees and other ones that have to stay. It is not evenly distributed along the property line. The importance of the buffer cannot be underestimated. The existing trees are needed to reduce the visual and sound impacts from a multi-story elementary school and high school. Additionally, sound protections around the stadium are critical. We urge the city council to delay the approval of the rezoning to allow additional time for review and discussions between the school district and Providence Point as we attempt to address these outstanding concerns. We request that the rezoning decision be delayed until Monday, December 30th, to allow that time. Approving the rezone of the Providence Heights property tonight will ignore the recommendations from the Planning Policy Commission and the majority of the 1,400 constituents and taxpayers living in Providence Point. Please reinforce the message that you sent at the November 12 study session, that you want to see concerns of the surrounding neighbors adequately addressed prior to voting on this important rezoning decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Sue Ann. Lots of hands in the air. By my calculation, that was speaker 15, so I have a few more names on the list, and then I'll open it up for others who would like to add new information to the dialogue. Next, for Tisha?
Natalie Fowler, Francie Pito, and Pete Hayes.
I thought I was going to get a bathroom break. Nope. All right. My name is Natalie Fowler, and I live in the Issaquah Highlands. Spending the past 15 years in Issaquah, I have looked at our city and our school district through a number of lenses: teacher, parent, homeowner, community member, principal, and now central administrator. My first lens was as a teacher relocating from another state, Texas, whoever that was. After receiving multiple offers in neighboring districts, it was Issaquah's facilities, programs, student-to-teacher ratios that led me to accept a position at Cougar Ridge Elementary. Later, I served as the principal of Cascade Ridge Elementary for six years. During that time, I saw the enrollment rapidly increase over, across our district, and learned about the challenges large student numbers sometimes can bring. That brings me to another lens. I have viewed Issaquah and the ISD through over the years as a parent. I have two sons, one who's currently at UW after attending Issaquah schools from second grade to graduation, and another who is currently a junior at Issaquah High. Both are very different people and very different learners. My older son is a strong student, had a positive experience at IHS, and never complained about the size of the school or his classes. He is typical of many of the students in our system. On the other hand, my younger son finds school more difficult and rarely initiates conversation about it. However, last year, he would share about material science and his amazing teacher, and it was clearly the bright spot in his day. This year, those bright spots have thankfully expanded, and we get to hear about the project he's working on in woodshop or the piece he's creating in visual arts with increasing frequency. I realized what his bright spots all have in common. They, one, are not traditional core content classes, and, two, they are taught by teachers that have passion for what they teach and the space, equipment, and facilities to provide these hands-on experience for students. High-quality science, art, and CTE classes require specialized and specific facilities. If we want to continue meeting the needs of all learners and prepare them for life after high school, we must continue offering a variety of classroom experiences for them, and this takes facility space matched with appropriate numbers of students and the amazing teachers to teach them. Which brings me to my next lens. As the executive director of Human Resources for the ISD, of which a primary role is supporting the well-being of all district employees, research shows that employees rank the social, emotional, and physical environment in which they work more important than even compensation. I'm sure the ISD's healthy work environment was a major factor in the district being recognized as a top-10 employer in Washington by Forbes Magazine. As we continue to hire staff, our state-of-the-art facilities will help attract strong candidates, particularly during a staffing shortage such as the one we are currently experiencing. And this brings me to the last lens through which I will speak tonight as a community member. While district facilities are built primarily to support the education of students, they also support the greater community. District gymnasiums, weight rooms, and fields allow community members like me to enjoy various physical activities such as walking a track and participating in local parks and recreation department offerings. Additionally, district facilities host church services, concerts, cultural events, sewing circles, and parking for city events, to name a few.
Your comment period is over.
So regardless of the lens which you all view our school district, Issaquah School District facilities positively contribute to the entire Issaquah community, both in and outside our schools. My hope is that you continue to allow the ISD to provide these opportunities by adopting the comprehensive plan, and I thank you for all your efforts.
Thank you, Natalie. Lots of hands in the air. Francie?
Yes, my name is Francie, Francie Pito, and I thank you all for the opportunity to speak before you tonight. I'm having trouble seeing, okay. I want to talk to you tonight about the possibility of building one or two schools next to Providence Point, which is my home. I've lived in Providence Point for 11 years and know the area pretty well. The Providence Ridge property being right next to Providence Point property is vital to Issaquah, and it's vital to Providence Point. I'm not against new schools. How could I be? I had a 30-year career in education and educational administration. What I want to say tonight is that we in Providence Point are asked to accept change. We know change. We've experienced it over long lifetimes. I don't choose children over grandparents or grandparents over children. How could I? I am both. I'm not a child, but I have children, and I am a grandmother. So I ask for whatever happens to Providence Ridge, that Providence Point and the Issaquah School District work together to exhibit compassion, respect, and teamwork to create a model of cooperation. I don't ask anyone to, I'm sorry, hang on, to choose adults over kids. How could I? Every human deserves consideration. I only ask that everyone appreciate the value your grandparents, like me, have invested in Issaquah. Through our property taxes, our shopping dollars, we have built much of Issaquah. It's our investment. We also are heavily invested in our children, yours, yours, and yours, and mine. They are the future. They're our future. Let's make their future bright, one that honors their future and ours. Thank you.
Thank you, Francie. Lots of hands in the air. Pete, I believe is up next.
My name is Pete Hayes. I represent Issaquah School District and have for 30 years. I brokered down over 10,000 acres and have been here since 1989, seen a lot of change, and just want everyone to know how incredibly hard it was to find this site. There were enormous challenges, and I have submitted a letter for your consideration. So, thank you.
Thank you, Pete. Hands in support. Tisha, next three names?
No one further has signed up to speak.
Okay, I overestimated. Thought we had over 20. If you would like to speak, if you want to come up and we form a line of at least three at a time, that would be helpful. Please start by stating your name and your address. That'd be great. Thank you.
My name is Nora Albert, and I reside in Providence Point for the past two years. Not particularly articulate, but felt the need to speak. I come from nearly 30 years of a career in education in a great school system in New York State, worked with the Board of Education, administrator, superintendent, et cetera. And I speak for myself, there is absolutely none of us, even here in Providence Point, that have an issue with wanting a better education for our kids and the need for more schools. We all realize that. I just wanted to say I feel very incredulous and sad that not one speaker here from the school district tonight, whether it be educator, a principal, a superintendent, has even mentioned, mentioned in the least, the impact or empathy or understanding of what the residents of Providence Point will have to live through with this. We understand schools are needed. Not sure that they needed, they are needed on this property. We understand that there's no property left because of the overpowering population, but there has to be some understanding, consideration of knowing what we are going through. Thank you.
Thank you, Nora. And lots of hands in the air. And your name, sir?
Good evening. My name's Dan Sreebney. I live at 22618 Southeast 44th Place in Issaquah, the Forest Village community of Providence Point. I first want to state my admiration for the educational professionals who are here tonight and who have spoken and who play such a critical role in our communities. I'm the father of a public school teacher. I hate that we have to provide funding for schools through school levies, but I've always voted for them and will continue to do so. And one of the important things about our educators is they teach children to be creative in challenging situations, which is what we find ourselves in tonight, in that we share a commitment to providing additional schools that are needed in Issaquah, that are safe, secure, and are appropriate to the locations being considered. And unfortunately, the current plan from the school district does not adequately address the appropriate nature to that particular parcel of land. And what I'm hoping is that your council can play the role of ensuring that there are not undefined promises, but that you can ensure that the communities around this area in the school district do work out clear, stipulated, legally enforceable agreements that can allow education to have the facilities it needs without disrupting the communities around it. And I think it could be possible, but it will take your role and not to vote tonight one way or another. This should not be considered an either-or decision. And if you decide to delay to ensure the two sides and all the communities come together and present you with a combined package that you can improve in a few weeks, that might be better. Thank you very much, and happy holidays.
Thank you, Dan. Lots of hands up in the air. I know the next fellow. Hi, Ken.
Good evening. Ken Easman. I reside at 2473 Northwest Stony Creek Drive in Issaquah, and I'm not here to talk about schools tonight. I'm here to talk about Title 18. I wanted to follow up on my emails to city council of November 27th and earlier today. It's the project to rewrite the city code for land use. When I ask myself, why does the comprehensive plan state that the forested hillside should be protected, I come to two conclusions. One is that development removes these special places from the community, and secondly, we recognize that development causes impact to the community and risk. And as a resident of the Talis community, I've seen these impacts of development, including large and hideous retaining walls, one particularly built for the benefit of a few extra homes, the hillslide at Parcel 9 sliding because of land reforming. Four years later, it's still being worked on, thankfully, and thankfully that developer had insurance, by the way, that's not required by city code. And that's something I would highly suggest that we add to city code when developing steep hillsides. We have invasive vegetation after 18 years because of the land being scraped and the sunny areas that are beneficial to invasive blackberry and butterfly bush. We're still working on that at the cost of tens of thousands of dollars to our community annually. And I would suggest there's an answer to the impact and the risk to the community, and that's to ask the developer to pay their fair share of these impacts and to assure through mandatory bonds and insurance. And let's incent the building on the valley floor, which is where we want it, and disincent building on our hillsides. I supported the purchase of the Burisma property, and I commend the city council for taking that courageous decision. But we would all agree, we can't buy our way out of the next Burisma. Our city code has to work for us. Our city code has to work for us, and that's why I'm asking City Council to provide that leadership, to get that city code the teeth that the comprehensive plan needs to truly be realized. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. I see a couple hands up in the background, a couple over there, and a couple more.
My name's Tim Brown. I live in Forest Village in Providence Point. One comment I'd like to make, I am a graduate of Issaquah School System. I was student by president in 1959. My family moved here in 1949, making this the 70th year my family's been associated with this community. I guess I have a couple comments to make. I'm going to be more polite than Sue Ann was, less polite than Sue Ann was.
Oh.
Because I think I'm just a member. I don't represent Providence Point, per se. First off, one thing I'd like to point out is that Providence Point, the sign you go by when you drive down 43rd Court says it's a 55-plus community. Well, the actual average age is 77. When you talk about building as they're planning with a stadium that is 600 feet from where our three-story building where 70- and 80-year-olds live, you're really talking about an impact. I just, and I think we had a lot of that in the planning commission review. I still think the presentation you have as a council has been much less than they did. The other point I just made to get out of here, but I'll be not so nice, is that, you know, we have at Providence Point a government affairs committee, and this committee meets with other governmental agencies. They've met repeatedly about the traffic light with this, with the city. It can meet with the water district, fire district, and so on. Since we learned in February that Issaquah had bought the land for the school, that government affairs committee has tried repeatedly to contact the Issaquah School District and asked for a meeting. They were ignored. We didn't even get a comment back from the school district. Part of your policy here, not to mention names, but we had an official here talk about how proud that official was of the conversation he had with Providence Point. That happened in the last two weeks. Where was he and where were all these discussions? We had 50 iterations and drafts. What has happened? How come we have been not included and discussed with at all? I think it's a matter really alarming. I think we're scared in Providence Point that the school district is just going to jam us, as they have to date. They are unlikely, as I understand now, once you get past your approval of the SEPA, the next SEPA, which will be the planned one, the one that's supposed to really look at the environments in I at Providence Point, is going to be done by the school. This is the same school that says they can't find another place, and a year delay would cost them $8 million. Good luck with that. So I just think if you're going to go forward with it, we do rely upon the City Council to put so many teeth in constraints so we really get the school district to come forward and really negotiate with us.
Your comment period ended.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Lots of hands in the air. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Denise Stepharm, and I'm legal counsel for the Issaquah School District. I know that you're in receipt of my December 11th letter regarding the criteria for the rezone and redesignation. And then also, I submitted an October 9th letter to the Planning Policy Commission that really outlined the district site search and how it was informed by the countywide planning policies, your comprehensive plan, and the CFF regulations. Not going to go into any detail on those issues right now. Just wanted to touch really quickly on one of the comments you've heard tonight about compatibility of this site with the surrounding neighborhood. As you've heard throughout the process, the CFF zoning by its express terms is designed to be compatible with zones throughout the city. It is also designed to minimize impacts on surrounding properties. I also want to emphasize that this is really just the first step. The district, if the approval is granted, will have to go through project-specific SEPA review, and then also through a very extensive site plan review process through the city, with the City Council having a role in that process as well. And I think I can reiterate for the superintendent that he really, truly is committed on behalf of the district, and indeed, the district administration is, to really working to address concerns as this process moves forward. So just wanted to, once again, urge support for the administration's recommendation this evening.
Thank you, Denise. Lots of hands in the air. Would you like to speak this evening?
Yeah.
Come on up.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
So I'm Anya. I'm 16. I'm a junior now. I'm going to be real, I don't really want to be here. I don't really want to talk right now, but I feel like I kind of have to. So I was in the Issaquah School District since kindergarten until 10th grade at Issaquah High School last year, in 9th grade, when I left because it was so big. I was really depressed. There was just no space for me. So I left, and now I'm at a private school in Seattle where there's only 70 kids, and it's great. And I get that that's not the goal of Issaquah's public schools, but that size difference is a big thing. And I think, like, we've heard a lot about, like, the impact on Providence Point, and I get that and I respect that, but I'm also, there are 2,200 kids, 2,500 kids at Issaquah that I know are all suffering. I know it. And I think a lot of people here, maybe you haven't been in the school, maybe you haven't felt that, but when you go in that school, everyone's like, what is the point? Like, kids are like, why am I here? Like, there's so many kids. I'm not special. Why do I matter? And my brother is in 6th grade now. He's at PCMS, and I don't want him to go through that. And so I just kind of want to say, on behalf of my friends, my, like, fellow students of mine who I know can change the world, who I know are going to do great things in their life, they deserve that opportunity, and the big school just can't support that. So I guess, to all of you, I kind of wanted to just say, like, please do consider the true, like, real needs of all these students. There are thousands of them, probably tens of thousands of them, who really need your help. So I respect everybody's stances here, and I know that this is a tough issue, especially in Providence Point, but I just urge you to really consider, like, going into those schools, what that apathy looks like and how we could fix it, and how this place and the education here could be this bastion of hope almost for our community, so.
Special thank you, Anya. You also came to Mayor's Coffee and shared this in a much smaller setting with some community members, and you opened a lot of eyes. So thank you again for sharing tonight. I know this is not your comfort zone. Thanks. Is there any, and lots of hands in the air. Is there anyone else who would like to speak this evening on any topic, because it is audience comments? Come on up to the microphone.
Good evening. My name's Steve Dorr. I'm a resident of Issaquah Highlands, Issaquah, the city. We've lived here for about 15 years. I've got a 6th grader in PCMS and an 8th grader at PCMS as well. We love Issaquah. Just like to point out to all the citizens in the council, the work the council has done to create the urban villages, and the sacrifices that other community members have made, especially those of us who do live in the created urban villages, sacrifices of space, sacrifices of noise, sacrifices of traffic, sacrifices of visual impacts, multiple impacts. We're all experiencing growth in Issaquah, and I think we all need to sacrifice to move forward as a community, whether we're on the council, in the government, in the school district, a teacher, the kids. You know, we're only ultimately as good as our kids, and let's do the best we can for them by giving them the schools that will make Issaquah great in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Lots of hands in the air. Is there anyone else who would like to address council this evening during audience comments? Steve, come on up.
Hi, Steve Dorr, 178 Northeast Dogwood Street for about 12 years now. So just in broad strokes, to respect the will of the council, there have been a number of SEPA issues that have been before you. You need to review the city code. I don't want to touch beyond that. I'm just talking about city code.
Just about to cut you off, but I never got the, I never got the look. Keep going, Steve.
So I don't want to talk further because I'll get into the weeds. That really needs some serious look at both what SEPA allows and city application of SEPA policies. Again, I don't want to go deeper than that because I'll get into the weeds and talk about things I'm not supposed to. Moving on to second issue, I agree, thanks to Councilmember Winterstein for his work on the council on a number of issues, transparent government, human services. You'll be missed. Thank you. Next issue, just wanted to take a moment. I went to the Christmas caroling at the Train Depot. I know when I first moved to Issaquah, I heard it advertised, and to me, caroling involved going from neighborhood to neighborhood singing, and I didn't hear that, so I thought I was misunderstood, and it wasn't happening. And so I'm glad to see it continuing all these years, so thanks for that. I guess on the zoning, I guess I come out against, I looked at the policies, and I looked at the land use goals, B, C, D, and H. It specifically talks about things we wanted to move forward with. I don't think the zoning is in support of those issues. Again, I don't want to talk about them more than referencing them because I want to respect the two-minute timeline that I have. I also look at number F, which talks about climate policy, and I'd like to see, we would do more than encourage, we talked about putting some policy in implementation that stops or enforces building code and building standards that support climate change. If we're going to encourage, we're not going to get the things we want by 2050, 20100, or beyond. I'll yield the balance of my time to the next person, but thank you for your continued work. And again, Councilmember Winterstein, thank you.
Thank you. I don't think you have any time left to yield, but anyway. Is there anyone else who would like to address council during audience comments? And I did have a question for our city clerk. Do we have a count of how many people are in the overflow room? Not sure. Just curious.
Last I heard, there were three.
Three, okay. So most folks are here. Is there anyone else that would like to address council this evening during audience comments? Second call, and third and final call for folks to address their council this evening. Okay, with that, we will close audience comments. Everybody, of course, is invited to stay for our meeting, but I also wanted to let you know that it does stream live on YouTube as well. So if people do have to go, you can watch the meeting live this evening as well. The next item we are going to move to is committee and regional reports, and we will start with Councilmember De Michele.
None at this time.
Thank you. Councilmember Walsh.
No report. Thank you.
This is awesome. Councilmember Ray.
No report this evening.
Ooh, okay. Councilmember Winterstein.
I'm going to need 15 minutes for my report. Now, the GMPB meeting of December 5th, consideration of the list of proposed amendments was completed to Vision 2050. And continuing a theme I touched upon early tonight, I mean, go watch that video, very, lots of emotion, many contentious issues from people from Snohomish County, to Pierce County, to Kitsap, to Eastern King County, about the vision for growth and quality of life, whether it be the environment, whether it be the quality of Puget Sound, whether it be equity, job housing balance, transportation equity, a lot of difficult negotiations at the very end of this. And many of the votes were split. I think there were two or three where the chair himself was the deciding vote. That's how close it was. And amazing, we just continued to work through, work through that. And at the end of the day, it was a unanimous vote by the GMPB to forward to the Executive Board of PSRC, the Vision 20, draft Vision 2050, as amended by the GMPB. So a lot of work done there, and the executive board will consider it, and I believe its final, final approval won't be until the overall business meeting sometime in June. Now, one caveat, I think we have a member who may be on the board coming up. 976 may force a redo. And so TBD on that. 976 is the state matter, which took away potentially a lot of the funding that this vision for 2050 was based upon when it comes to transportation. So totally, you may have some work on that. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Goodman.
No report.
Council President Marts.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have actually a very happy report from SCA Pick last week. It was held Wednesday, December 11th. In the pre-pick meeting, we had election for the upcoming Board of Directors, and I am very proud to say our own mayor, Mary Lou Pauley, was elected to a two-year term to the SCA Board of Directors.
Your commitment.
This is the first, we've had a, we've had a dry spell. I was a, I was a member when I was pick chair, and before that, we had a member in our previous city administrator who was there for the administrator's role, but it's, we've had a dry spell. And we are back with a vengeance because at the 7 o'clock pick meeting, the recommendation of the nominating committee was, was accepted, and we have just, all of a sudden, now a ton of regional representation. Incoming Councilmember Zach Hall is on the Affordable Housing Committee. Our own, Councilmember Chris Ray is going to be filling my old seat on GMPC that I timed out for. Councilmember Barb De Michele is on the Healthier Care Governing Board. Incoming Councilmember, once and future Councilmember Victoria Hunt is on King County District Advisory Committee. Councilmember Lindsay Walsh is on PSRC Economic Development District Board. I am, as Councilmember Winterstein alluded to, moving into kind of his old seat on GMPB. It will be a shame if 976 forces a redo. 976 may force a number of redos around this region, but we will do what we need to do. And not content for just merely being on the Sound Cities Board of Directors, our own mayor, Mary Lou Pauley, was also placed on the PSRC Transportation Policy Board and the Regional Transit Board, so.
Feeling overwhelmed.
So thank you, everybody who stepped forward, and as, as the pick rep, it was a very proud moment to see Issaquah so strongly represented in, regionally. I will also mention that SCA picked new pick leadership. Semamish Mayor Kristi Malachow will be the chair for the pick next year, and Kent City Councilmember Bill Boyce will be vice chair. And there was a conversation about the regional homelessness response, which is basically, the county went ahead and passed a policy, I think it was six to one was the final vote, but they have a plan going forward. While SCA Pick didn't get to have a particularly influential role in what that organization would look like, SCA as an organization has a major seat at the table. As of last Wednesday, there were some rumblings about how one of the 600-pound gorillas in the room, not in the pick room, but regionally, felt about the Sound Cities folks having as much influence. All I can say is there's a million of us and only 600,000 of them. So with that, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Council President Marts. For the mayor's report, I'm first going to start off with regional update. I did get to sit in at the last Eastside Fire and Rescue Board meeting for our representatives, and I thought I'd share some of that information this evening. We had no committee meetings last month, and we did have a fire chief briefing at this session. There was a talk about the PFAS project that the city of Issaquah Ecology and EFOR are working on, and the signing of the companion agreements that this council completed at their last meeting. On January 17th, there's going to be a PFAS Project Team meeting. We do have a $500,000 budget for this next scope of work. And a note that the State Department of Ecology has opened up a new program for disposal of firefighting foams, which is one of the constituents of concern for us in our investigation. The strategic plan for Eastside Fire and Rescue, the update process is going to start in January. Thank you to those that are here that worked on it. Now I'm looking around, I'm not sure that we've got anybody left who worked on the original strategic plan, maybe Councilmember Goodman. But that update is about to start. It will be completed prior to September so that it can be completed and included in EFOR's budget. There is a board retreat scheduled for February 26th or 27th. They are polling. It will be an evening retreat offsite, and the focus for this year will be on board development. EFOR, just like the city, rolled out a new website. They rolled theirs out on December 18th. And there was discussion about the closure of the Issaquah Falls City Road Project in Semamish from March 28th, I think is the closure start date, for six to eight months. And the reason it was talked about there is because EFOR has looked at their service delivery, and they are staging an aid car at the north end of the service area in order to be able to provide adequate service coverage during this significant road project. to be able to provide adequate service coverage during this significant road project. Under regular business, our representatives for EFOR have told us before that they're working on governance, so there was some additional discussion on that. The next steps on that will be to send it to the Finance Administration Committee for some deeper conversations, and then it will be off to the lawyers before it comes back to the body for a vote. And I think those were the major, oh, there was an executive session that was held for performance review, and coming out of that, there was a recommendation approval by the board for a pay increase for the fire chief. So, that was part of the public record. For the mayor's report this evening, we will not be having, we do not anticipate having an executive session. I did want to cover a few local issues, some newsy items. First one was city staff helping local business Issaquah cleaners. Our Public Works and Engineering Environmental Staff have been providing technical and educational resources to Issaquah cleaners, which has enabled the dismantlement and removal of a perk dry cleaning machine and related chemicals. Issaquah's cleaners is located within the city's critical aquifer recharge area, so changes in business practice like this are even more relevant as it directly relates to the protection of human health and the environment. The business qualified for funding from both the Department of Ecology and King County Programs, designed to incentivize businesses to change practices and eliminate the use of specific carcinogens and harmful chemicals from within our communities. Issaquah cleaners will receive a $40,000 reimbursement, which significantly offsets the costs associated with purchasing and transiting away from perk dry cleaning processes to professional wet cleaning services. Issaquah staff will continue to perform education, outreach, and assistance as we identify additional funding and safer choice product replacement opportunities at other qualifying businesses. I also wanted to give the council an update on the Eastlake-Samamish Parkway and Southeast 43rd Roundabout Project. This is the roundabout on the valley floor, not the one, the project higher up on 43rd that was referenced earlier this evening. We have made some interim improvements at the Eastlake-Samamish Parkway and Southeast 43rd Roundabout. It includes removing the southbound bypass lane, adding some additional crosswalk signage, and installing temporary speed radar signs and speed signals, and speed signs at all legs. Staff is continuing to work on this project and is developing plans to permanently close the southbound bypass lane, working to reduce vehicle travel speeds, improve pedestrian awareness at all crosswalk legs, and improve the overall look of the roundabout. The permanent improvements are planned to be installed in 2020. So, I drove through it on my way home from Redmond the other day, and I would suggest when you're out and about, you take a drive-through as well. The last note is a sad one for me. It's about the passing of one of our board and commission members, George McGrath. It's with a heavy heart that I share the news that George McGrath, a member of our Cable TV Commission, recently passed away. A service will be held in California. George joined the commission in March 2018 with an interest in assisting Issaquah with our cable TV franchise agreements. He had retired after working for Ecology as a Director, Executive Vice President, and Chief Operating Officer. I met George a couple of months before he applied for that posting at a mayor's coffee after they had just relocated to Issaquah, and he and his wife wanted to find out how to get involved. He's an amazing man, and I will really miss my friend, so I just wanted to say thanks tonight and point that out. That is it for the mayor's report. The next item on the agenda this evening is the Consent Calendar. This was distributed to council in advance, and if it's authorized, the items on the Consent Calendar will be considered together and approved by one motion. Have the payables and payroll been reviewed?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Does any council member desire to remove any item from the Consent Calendar and consider it under regular business? Seeing none, is there a motion? Council President Martz.
Madam Mayor, I move we adopt the Consent Calendar as listed in tonight's meeting agenda.
Second.
It's been moved in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That carries unanimously. Thank you. Regular business. The first item under regular business this evening is for me to check in and see if the council needs to have a small break before we go into regular business, or do you want to get to the first item? I'm seeing break.
Yeah.
Break. We'll take a five-minute break.
Five minutes.
Better go. We can do it at nine, but.
Okay, we are back in session and we are in regular business. And we're moving on to AB 7867, the A 2019 budget amendment. The action before council tonight is to adopt the ordinance. This is the first time that this has been before council. And I'd like to ask Susan Monsell, Budget Analyst, to come up and give us a presentation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm going to keep this presentation very brief.
Suzie, can you pull the microphone a little closer?
Yes, thank you. There are six items included in this proposed budget amendment. Of those four of them have already come before council and been approved by Agenda Bill. Of those four, included on the slide here, there is the Issaquah Police Support Staff Association, or IPSA, contract impacts. And this would increase the general fund expenditures by $190,000 to execute the 2019 portion of this collective bargaining agreement. The next two were approved in the same Agenda Bill on November 4th related to the Bergsma land property. The first would increase general fund revenues by about 5.3 million, accepting the grant revenue for that property. The other would be the expenditure side out of the general fund, which would be returning the 3 million to the trust for public lands. The final item on this list is the ITS camera traffic, traffic camera upgrade. There are two pieces to this, both on the expenditure side. It would increase the ITS fund expenditures for 2019 by about 71,500, as well as transfer 125,600 from the Street Capital Fund to the ITS fund. And then there are two additional items included that were not previously approved by Agenda Bill. The first was a capital project that had originally, in the 2020 to 2025 Capital Improvement Plan, been included as a 2020 project. What we have since learned is that the grant revenue that we had anticipated for 2020, we are actually set to receive in 2019. So as council may recall, during the 2020 budget discussions, this project was not included for 2020, as this was anticipated for 19. So this amendment would allow us to receive that grant revenue in 2019, as well as the associated expenditures. The unspent funds, which at this point in December would be the majority of that 2.167 million, would then be requested as a reauthorization of those funds into 2020. The other item is the King County Wastewater Sewage Treatment Usage Adjustment. Traditionally, this item has been underbudgeted in the city. I believe going back to 2017, the city has needed to do a budget adjustment to up the revenue and the expenditures to meet the actual need. So this would adjust the 2019 portion, increasing revenue by about 227,000 and increasing expenditures by 715,000. And as council may recall, we did adjust this for 2020, so we should not need to do this again next year. And those are all of the items included in tonight's proposed amendment.
Thank you. Council questions on any of the items? Councilmember Winterstein?
Yep.
Could you go back one slide, please? Thank you. So that last one, is that just a trueing up? Is that as just making sure that our budget document represents?
Correct.
We're actually being charged and what we're actually paying?
Correct.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions from council? I get a motion. You have it?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I move that we adopt ordinance number?
2893.
Mending the 2019 budget as set forth in ordinance number 2854, and amended in ordinances number 2863 and 2878 concerning revenues, expenditures, and fund balance for various funds for the year 2019.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Is there any council discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries unanimously. Thank you, Suzie. The next item under regular business this evening is AB 7877, State Environmental Policy Act, Appeal of Comprehensive Plan and Zoning Map Amendments. This is part of the quasi-judicial process. The action this evening is to adopt the findings and conclusions. The council conducted an appeal hearing at the December 2nd council meeting. On December 5th, the City Council deliberated the appeal and voted to deny the appeal and uphold the final determination of nonsignificance. Council also directed that findings of fact and conclusions be prepared to formalize their decision. The findings are before council for adoption this evening. And I'd like to ask Ray Liao, I said it wrong, didn't I?
Liao.
Liao. Liao, legal counsel to the City Council, to the lectern. Sorry about that.
No worries. So, good evening, council members. As the mayor introduced, we're returning to the matter of the SEPA appeal concerning the proposed 2019 comprehensive plan and zoning map amendments. So, just to briefly recap, the Providence Point Umbrella Association had filed an appeal of the threshold determination of nonsignificance for this set of amendments that was issued by the city SEPA responsible official. So on December 2nd, the council held an open record appeal, at which time the Providence Point Umbrella Association, the City of Issaquah staff, and the Issaquah School District presented their arguments, exhibits, and testimony into the record, addressing those issues raised in the appeal. The council closed the record at the conclusion of the evening, very late night on December 2nd, then re-met, reconvened on December 5th at a special meeting to discuss the evidence in the record and the issues on appeal. At the conclusion of the evening, the council voted by a 5 to 2 margin to deny the appeal and uphold the DNS for the proposed comprehensive plan and zoning map amendments. The council also gave me direction to draft a proposed set of findings and conclusions consistent with the discussion during those deliberations on December 5th. So that draft is what's currently before the council, at least according to the agenda, for discussion, potential amendment, and ultimately, final approval. So with that, I believe the draft decision was included in your pocket and was posted and made available as well to the public. So are there any questions or additional changes that the council would like to discuss and see?
Councilmember Goodman?
Thank you. I don't have the specific page in front of me, but there is a reference in the document to the April 2016 election and the percentage, the percentage that the proposition passed. Do you know where that is?
I'm looking for it right now, sorry.
It's okay. I'll say this, page 5.
Page 5. Sorry, my computer, of course, is not being responsive. And if the clerks can find it faster, even better.
Okay, so?
Is that finding number 2? That's up there, yeah.
Yes. So I think Jake Cooper's declaration says it's nearly 70%. And although that would appear to be, number 2 would appear to be accurate, it's actually, it's actually not the result of the vote that King County Elections has, because I looked it up. And so I would request that we change that to say what Mr. Cooper said, so that it's at least accurate. And what Elections has on record is not in the record anyway, so we would want to cite to Jake's declaration, Mr. Cooper's declaration. Thanks.
So, and I apologize, Tisha, do you have that on the screen right now? So I believe what Councilmember Goodman has asked for is to replace, instead of the second, on the second line where it says by a 69% majority, I believe she's requesting that it reflect the language of Mr. Cooper's declaration, which said by nearly 70%. Is that correct?
Right.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Any other proposed edits? Let's member Walsh.
I believe Council President Mertz's last name is spelled incorrectly in there.
We caught that.
We caught that, all right. Thank you. He was very quick to let me know my typo.
Any, Councilmember Goodman?
And then the other?
Before I go back to you, is there anyone, I want to make sure everybody gets a touch. Okay, Councilmember Goodman?
So then, for those of us who were in the minority of this vote, what would be, what are we voting on tonight regarding this findings of fact and conclusions of law? And just looking for guidance on how we would think about voting.
Yeah, so effectively, the vote on, the overarching decision occurred on December 5th to deny the appeal. And so the vote that's, or the motion before the council at this point in time is not a revisitation of that motion, or that vote that was previously made by the council, but to adopt the findings of facts, conclusion, and decision as being consistent with the deliberations of the council. So effectively, you could vote to approve the findings of fact, conclusion, and decision, even though you may have voted previously to deny the appeal, all you're doing is approving that these are consistent with collectively the council's deliberations, findings, and ultimate decision.
Any other questions? Let's member Goodman?
I have one more, and it's more related to procedural question. So it's my understanding that the council usually has an option to reconsider a vote. And reconsidering a vote, a motion that was before us, a reconsideration, has to be brought by somebody who was in the majority, which wouldn't be me or Councilmember Ray, but it would be the others who voted in favor. And I'm just mentioning it only because it's a significant decision. And sometimes, we go away, certainly I do, when we have big decisions. Not that they're all, some of them are not as significant as this one. But go away and think about things. So there is an opportunity to reconsider. It would have to be brought, that reconsideration would have to be brought by one of the majority voting members. And the reason I, other reason I bring it up is because it is a big decision about SEPA. And when the project, if the project moves forward, then the lead SEPA agency will be the school district. And as we all know, the City of Issaquah does not have a direct role in that, has a passive indirect role and can comment only. So I raise that as a potential, or a real option for the ones who voted in the majority, in case there is any interest in reconsideration.
Any other questions or proposed edits? Council President Mertz?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to adopt the?
May I, oh, sorry, I should have, what I wanted to do before we made a motion was provide a list of the options, just to make sure that council is clear on all the options. And then I'll ask for a motion. Sorry about that. There are three options this evening. One is to move to adopt the findings, conclusions, and decisions as presented. There's also an option to move and adopt an amended version, if council had proposed edits, which you did. There is also a possibility that was mentioned by Councilmember Goodman, which is also an option, which is to make a motion to revisit the decision. So I just wanted to make sure that you were familiar that all three of those were there. And I believe that the way Councilmember Goodman described it is accurate. Council President Mertz, would you like to make a motion?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to adopt the amended findings of facts, conclusions, and decision as prepared by City Council Legal Counsel Ray Liao, denying appeal number APP 19-00006, and upholding the final determination of nonsignificance DNS for the 2019 comprehensive plan and zoning map amendments.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion. Council President Mertz, would you like to comment on the motion first?
I would not.
Okay. Any comments, any discussion on the motion?
No, but can you reread it, please?
Sure. Move to adopt the amended findings of fact, conclusions, and decision as prepared by City Council Legal Counsel Ray Liao, denying appeal number APP 19-00006, and upholding the final determination of nonsignificance DNS for the 2019 comprehensive plan and zoning map amendments. Council discussion? Let's member Ray.
So, I might just confirm, the vote here is that this is a fair and accurate representation of what we discussed on the 2nd of December.
That's correct.
I continue to feel that we did not appropriately or correctly interpret law and precedent in our denial of this appeal. I think, I think it was the majority, the will of the majority?
Sorry, point of order. I'm not sure you're allowed to say that under Washington state law.
Can you do point of order towards the chair and we'll have our lawyer weigh in? That's fine.
I'm not sure you're allowed to say that the council, that a previous vote was incorrectly applied by the City Council.
Where's my counsel? Mr. Haney?
Should decide.
I have a question for you.
Not sure I'm supposed to be advising the council on this matter.
I was advising the chair.
So, yeah, but I'm not sure this is related to the vote, it is to the behavior of a council member, under the rules?
Under Roberts' rules, the council isn't supposed to reference prior action taken by the council.
Okay. Got my answer. Thank you.
Then I won't, I won't say that, then.
Okay.
And I think I'm ready to move on.
Thanks. Additional comments or discussion under this motion? Seeing now, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of adopting the findings of, the amended findings of fact, conclusions, and decision as prepared by the City Council Legal Counsel Ray Liao, denying appeal number APP 19-00006, and upholding the final determination of nonsignificance for the 2019 comprehensive plan and zoning map amendments, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries unanimously. Next item on the agenda is AB 7787, 2019 comprehensive plan and zoning map amendments. The council asked this evening is to consider adopting an ordinance. Council did hear this item also at the November 12, 2019 council study session. And I'd like to get Trish Hanen in, Policy Planning Manager, to provide a presentation.
That's so great. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Tonight, you get to see the comprehensive plan amendments again. We had a public hearing on the docket of comprehensive plan amendments, just the list, back in January from the Planning Policy Commission. They approved it in February and sent it to you. You all approved it in February, and then you updated the docket in June, which was at the time that you added the three parcels in Providence Point area for the school district. We had a studies, PPC had a public hearing on all the actual amendments, starting on September 26th, and we continued it twice, October 10th and October 24th. You all had a study session on November 12th, and then tonight is the night we've set aside for you to review and take action if you feel that you can. By state law, we're only allowed to amend the comprehensive plan once a year, and to look at the amendments cumulatively, instead of in a piecemeal way. And so you're being asked to look at all of them together in a, in a group, and how they reflect with each other. And that's, that's before you tonight. You had asked in the study session for specific, the specific rezon criteria and how each of the parcels was evaluated based on those criteria. And you have two ordinances before you tonight, and all of the properties, except the three in Providence Point, all of those rezon criteria analysis is in one ordinance, and the three Providence Point criteria analysis is in the other ordinance. So we provided those to you. The last bullet is actually not correct. Our attorney did some research, and we are allowed to take action in early next year, as long as it's still in the cumulative amendments. As long as you all are still looking at them cumulatively, we would still be able to do the 2020 amendments at the end of next year. So I'm going to just launch right into the elements. The first element that we're amending is transportation element. We're adding the Transportation Improvement Program that we do every year, which is a requirement of the state. You had already adopted it and sent it to the state, but now is when we incorporate it into the comprehensive plan. We also incorporated the concurrency updates that you all did.
I was going to ask a quick question of the council. Majority of this material you have seen before, and there are some very big hefty items here, and there are a lot of other items. How detailed of a presentation do you want on all of the items? We can proceed at the normal pace we do, or we, okay, I got one, one little bit less. Understanding that I think most of the people who have come this evening are also very interested in just a portion of what's on here. So Trish, if you want to adjust your pace a little, and if there are questions, we can come back to it, that'd be great.
Do you want me to, to the parcels?
No, I think if you just put the slides up and give us a sentence on each slide, that would be great.
Okay. The highlight of the land use element, so we're done with transportation. The highlight of the land use element is the update to housing units and jobs. And you can see before you how many houses, housing units we added, and this is the slide with how many jobs we added. We're on target for both jobs and housing to meet our targets. The Shoreline Master Program is not being updated this time, because we're not done. Will be done hopefully next year. The only thing that's changed so far is the, we updated the date. And we added policies about the Mountains to Sound Greenway. And here's the really exciting part. These are all the land use designation and rezon proposals, all on one map, so you can see where they all are. Some of them, we did not choose to do, and those are the Bergsma properties. From here, numbers 4, 6, 7, 8, 9, and 10, we will do those at a future date after the Parks Department. And you all have figured out where the trails are, where maybe benches and whatever other amenities are up there. So those are not on the table today. Parcel's 1 and 3, you fairly understand what we're asking on those. We're still, the administration is still sticking with our community facilities, facilities rezoned. This slide was added so you all know what would happen next if the community facilities, facilities rezoned occurs. This would be what the process would be for, for the proposals for the schools. As you can see, there's a lot of touches that you all would do. The Development Commission would be reviewing it as well. And so there's a lot of opportunities for the public, Development Commission and the council to be involved with, with the process. Parcel 5 is?
Jim, if we're going to go back to that slide for a second, we have a question.
Sure.
Sorry, what's it? You say review it.
The school proposal. I'm sorry, if the, when they come in, if they come in, if you all choose to rezon it to community facilities, facilities, the second green box is what happens next. The school district would propose a site plan, the staff would review it and recommend to the Development Commission. The Development Commission would hold their public hearings and get community input. They would recommend to you all, because it's a master site plan, and then you all would review and make the decision.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure we understood it's not about rezoning, it's a whole different thing.
Right, the top green box is the rezoning piece.
I wonder if at this time, Jim, you could address this approval with conditions under the redesignation and rezon. It has had questions asked around whether or not that's an option for the council and how, what that would look like.
Generally speaking, rezoning with conditions is not an option. The way to rezon property and condition it in a binding way is to use a development agreement. But basically, zoning is, the zone is the zone. And when you adopt a particular zone for property, the property is zoned that. Trying to impose conditions on that zoning alters the underlying zoning category, and that is really a zoning map amendment, excuse me, that's either a zoning code amendment, or in some cases, in the United States, that has been considered a spot zone. So really, the way to do rezones with conditions is to solicit a development agreement from the developer, which the developer and the city then enter into, which binds their property as to specific uses or specific conditions. And then the development agreement and the rezon are then approved at the same time. And that's how you generally condition a rezon, not saying, we're adopting a rezon and we're unilaterally imposing these conditions.
Thank you. Thank you, Trish.
Did parcel 5, owned by King County, and it would be part of the Cougar Mountain Wildland Park. Parcel 11 is the Talis School Site. This is an interesting one. You all sent us back to the drawing board on parcel 12, and it's really good that you did, because we found an even more clever way of zoning this, that it seems to make everyone happy. The roads are one zone, which would be community facilities, facilities, and those are, the little arrows, the little B pointing to them. The little As north of 60, southeast 61st Street, they're like little pockets, those would be open space, because the parcels to the north are also community facilities, facilities, open space. The A by the number 12, that's where the wetland mitigation is, that would also be community facilities, open space. The B to the south is the roadway, is southeast 62nd, and the beginnings of the roundabout, that would be community facilities, facilities. And then the little tiny C? that would be community facilities, facilities, and then the little tiny C under that would be the same zone as the adjacent property of the cities, which would be community facilities, recreation. So brilliantly, one parcel would have three zones and city-owned, but it seems to make everyone happy and make everyone aware of exactly what's going on on that parcel. So that is our new administration's recommendation, and that's because you all sent us back to the drawing board. Yes?
Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you. So for the parcel C, why wouldn't it be CFO, open space?
Because the parcel to the south that the city owns is recreation, and so we were trying to make it continuous.
So why wouldn't we just make, I mean, my question is, why couldn't we just make everything within parcel 12, community facilities, open space, except for community facilities for the roadway? I don't understand why we're trying to be consistent with the parcel below C, when the goal would be make everything open space.
Well, we could. We were just trying to be consistent with the city-owned parcel to the south, which is recreation, and not have just a little sliver, like if there's a, I don't know if there's benches or a bathroom or something, and all of a sudden, there's the sliver of open space just to the north, it would restrict what you could do on the, it just gives, would give us a little more room to do, to have a recreation zone.
Do you remember what the fee was, Trish, for, it was associated with the initial option one?
Oh, to do a survey?
To do the boundary adjustments necessary?
Five hundred? Five thousand?
No, five thousand.
Do I hear five thousand, it looks like it was.
Okay. Is that a?
Which we wouldn't have to do with this one. They would just be lines on the map, on the zoning map.
Yeah, I'm just thinking that it should all be CF, open space. There's also a mistake above parcels A, B, and C. It said the current zoning was, oh, open space, it's actually mixed use, the one to the north.
To the north of B?
Mm-hmm. According to King County's parcel map.
Oh. I thought we rezoned it last year.
Okay, well, it's not changed.
It's not changed at King County?
Yeah.
Sometimes they're slower, but we understand that. That's okay.
So anyway, that's my, I guess that's just my concern, where we have that little sliver down where there was C. It seems that if the intention was to make everything open space, and we're not planning on doing anything with that little sliver, that it would just, we would just do what we need to do to make it CFOS, and if it, you know, there's a small fee to do that, it just seems like that would be the thing to do, so we don't get stuck later saying, "Oh, look, there's a recreational facility here that we can use," because I don't think that's the intent.
Okay.
Councilmember Witschstein.
Trish, you said the parcel adjacent to Section D there is already zoned for facility, or recreation.
Correct.
What type of recreational improvement, if any, is on that parcel now?
I'm not aware of what would be there. That would be a Parks question. I think, I don't think that's Darst Park. Do you know? It is Darst Park?
There's a trail through there.
Okay. Then that's all there is there now at this point.
And that was the trail that was just, I think it was recently upgraded as part of the-
Southeast 62nd?
Southeast 62nd, yeah, 62nd extension, that was, I think it was an improvement that we got from the Costco Development Agreement for the improvement to that trail on that parcel.
Okay. Yeah, I'm not, I'm not aware.
All right.
I'd look over, okay, I'm getting the nod. Yes, I guess that is-
Thank you.
Any other questions right now?
Okay. There are no changes on parcel four, that's still for city-owned and as part of the Future Front Street Park Assembly, as community facilities, recreation. Are there any other questions on the rezones?
Doesn't look like so, not at this time.
Okay. The other elements, we went over a little bit in the study session. Do you have questions on the other ones, or do you want to get right to the discussion?
Councilmember DeMichele.
And I apologize to my fellow council members, but I wasn't on the council on November 12 when you had the work study session, so I am looking at the Planning Policy Commission recommendation for parcel three. Is it okay to ask the clarification there? That is being proposed by the PPC to be open space, which would render it undevelopable and probably unsellable. Does, and this is probably a question for Mr. Haney, does that constitute a public taking of property?
You did your research. You know, that's, that's a question that probably is better taken up in an executive session. I would tell you that that is a concern, yes, but I wouldn't want to opine on it specifically in an open session.
Okay, thank you.
So Trish, we're done with the presentation now, and they're open for any questions? Or is there more material?
There's more. It's all things that we talked about at the study session, and so I don't want to repeat other than for Councilmember DeMichele.
Would you like to finish going through the slide deck at that pace of just a line per, yeah, let's, let's go through the whole slide deck, just one line on each one, and see if something pops up.
Utilities and Public Services, it talks about the recent adoption of the King County Comprehensive Solid Waste Plan. That's a basic one. The Parks and Rec Open Space and Trails Element, the goals were redone, because you all had asked for the goals to be redone in your last, in your adoption of the 2018 Park Strategic Plan. So an ad hoc group of Park Plan, Park Board and PPC met for several months to redo the, sort of the format and the order of the Parks' goals and policies, so that's what you have in the, in this element. Capital Facilities Element, got a bit of an update because we did the new fire, transportation, school impact fees, and police, general government, and bike and ped mitigation fees. Our consultant also told us that since the impact fees are a function of the state, that we should only talk about level of service when we're talking about impact fees, and those things that we, we look at with, like, what's the level of service for fire, let's say, because we collect impact fees on those. So we tried to edit all of the terms, level of service, out of this element to try to be in keeping with our recommendations from, our advice from our consultant. There's still some places we talk about level of service, because it's something that Issaquah has always talked about in certain places, but we relied on them and their, their familiarity with impact fees in the state, so that we weren't being out of line with this element. So that's why there seemed to be a lot of changes in there. We also have all the park impact fee, capital facilities in there, just in case, whatever you approve for park impact fees early next year, at least hopefully early next year, that will be covered by all of the projects that are in this element. There's a list, we have to tell you what we didn't address in the docket this year. Those are also listed in the ordinance, and that's a state requirement, and we're recommending that you approve the proposed two amendments, and noting that the Planning Policy Commission did not agree with our recommendation, just in parcels one, two, and three.
So just to make sure that's clear, that the administration recommendation is not following the Planning Policy Commission recommendation.
Correct, we are not following their recommendation.
Questions on the presentation, on the information? Councilmember Goodman?
Question. So we have, we have two proposed ordinances in our packet. So can somebody explain to us what the thinking is behind that? And then I also have some, another question about Planning Policy Commission.
Okay, do you want to answer that?
I can explain it, since it was my idea. I'll take, I'll take the blame and credit for it. We understood that the City Council, that the rezones of the Issaquah School District parcels seem to be controversial, and that the remainder of the Comprehensive Plan Amendments and rezones did not. So we wanted to give you the opportunity to address the two sequentially, and to take action potentially on the remainder of the Comprehensive Plan package, even if you decide not to rezone the school district parcels. So we broke them into two ordinances to give you the opportunity to do that. You still are required by the GMA to consider everything concurrently and to make your decisions concurrently, but this would give you an opportunity to take action tonight on at least one portion of the package if you wanted to do that.
Councilmember Ray.
I just want to follow up a little bit on that question. So if we took action on everything other than the Providence Heights rezon and deferred that for a later date, is this a way just to take this one chunk, this body of work where it seems like there's a bit of agreement and just put it, put it, put it behind us and move on, and then spend more time on considering the second body of work? Is that the rationale, the thinking?
Well, that is one thing that you could do. I think the, the initial thinking was that not knowing which way the City Council might want to go, whether you were going to approve or deny the Issaquah School District rezones, putting them all in one ordinance would have meant that we would have had to separate that out somehow and start crossing out sections and rewriting it, as we sat here at the table, if that was what you decided to do. So trying to avoid that, we separated them into two ordinances. If you adopt both of them tonight, that would adopt everything. If you adopt one and not the other, and, and decided not to adopt the other, that could be the final decision, or you could adopt, you could defer the entire package. There's a number of options that you have, but we wanted to give you the option at least of taking action separately without having to rewrite everything tonight if you, if you were going to do that.
No, I think that's, I think that's great. I appreciate the, the forethought in doing that. So my, my follow-up question to that is, if we took action on one and deferred the other, would that still be considered dealing with all of our Comprehensive Plan elements at the same time?
Well, the, there is a regulation that's been adopted by the Department of Commerce that says that as long as you consider all of the amendments together at once for their cumulative effects, the fact that one or more may bleed into the next year is not violating the once-per-year rule. I would suggest that you would want to do, take action fairly quickly in the new year on the other one, if you were going to do that, and that you would want to make sure that in taking that action, that you considered the cumulative impacts of those things you had already passed, together with whatever you did in the new year. I would not suggest that you would want to defer that until sometime later during the year, when there's a lot of additional consideration going on, because that would be a separate amendment.
Great, thanks, Jim, and it gives us some flexibility, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Councilmember Goodman.
Earlier, you talked about the possibilities. One of them was a rezon with conditions, and you mentioned a development agreement. With what, the question you were just answering, and bifurcating this docket into two ordinances, and, and the notion that you could vote on one now and look at one later, where does that, how does that fit in?
I like to say it has the virtue of never having been tried. No. No, it's, you know, the, the statute doesn't talk specifically about your ability to consider other things, but the development agreement is an option to be able to consider, and I think you could possibly do that by deferring action on one if you had a development agreement come forward in very short order. A development agreement itself calls, calls or requires a public hearing, so you would have to hold a public hearing before the City Council on a development agreement.
I have a parliamentary question, if I may. Trish, typically, we know that there's the possibility that council will have a lot of discussion about this this evening, and the way the two motions are broken out, would the next step be to move one of these motions to enable them to have their deliberations, or is that awkward when they may not exactly know where they want to be on the spectrum of choices this evening? What was, what's the best path forward?
Well, to have focused discussion, it would be ideal to have a motion before you, but then the comment should be limited to the scope of that ordinance.
So then, if what they primarily want to talk about is the Issaquah School District adjustments, the order of the motions would be moving the second motion first, so they can have their substantive discussion. Is that clear?
No, because it seems like you could equally just move the first one and get it out of the way.
That's okay? Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Go ahead.
With that, I will make a motion to adopt ordinance number- -adopting by reference several amendments to the Issaquah Comprehensive Plan, processed as part of the 2019 Comprehensive Plan and Zoning Map Amendments, amending the land use element, the transportation element, the Parks Recreation Open Space and Trails element, Utilities and Public Services element, and the Capital Facilities element, and adopting by reference amendments to the city zoning map, excluding Comprehensive Plan and Zoning Map Amendments for three parcels being acquired by the Issaquah School District in the Providence Heights neighborhood to be adopted by separate ordinance, providing for severability and establishing an effective date.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion. Councilmember Goodman.
I would like to address the parcel 12 issue, and I would like to amend the, so the, if we adopt it as the motion is read, then it would be the option four, which is the split zone. So I would like to amend the motion to have parcel 12 be all community facilities, open space, including the sliver of parcel C, except for parcel, the road parcels would be community facilities, facilities, which we've talked about. I'm not exactly sure if that is option one, so maybe somebody can help me.
Option one, I believe, was the whole parcel being community facilities, facilities. That was, unless they, the numbers changed in the-
Changed.
But that could be a new option, that's fine.
So I guess it would be option four, except for the sliver of C would be community facilities, open space.
Could you put that map back up, Trish?
Oh.
Give her a second.
Second.
Okay. So moved and seconded. Councilmember Goodman, would you like to talk to it?
Well, I think I talked about it enough.
Is there any other discussion? Councilmember DeMichele.
Trish, Trish said that everybody was happy with the compromise. Who's everybody?
Well, the, the folks that were worried about the wetland being CFF, wanted it to be CFO. Oh, go ahead.
So Keith Niven, Director of Development Services. So the wetland mitigation site is north of the road, and the comments that came out during the public, both at PPC and at the study session for council, was concerned that that wetland would be designated CFF, and at some point, the city would lose track that it's a wetland mitigation site. So as we looked at this and knew that the road needed to be CFF, so that it would not be a non-conforming structure within this zone, what we looked at was what's to the south, and what was recommended by staff was that that be designated as CF Recreation, because there is a trail there. Councilmember Winterstein is right, there's actually a trail through that and Darst Park. Here's where you have an overlap. If you read the description for CF Recreation and- If you read the description for CF Recreation and CF Open Space, they both allow for trails. So, either one, I think, is an adequate outcome. And as staff looked at this, rather than creating a little piece of CFOs between the CFF and the CFR, our suggestion from a planning standpoint was just to make it all CFR. It also saves the city from having to spend resources on doing that legal description and lot line adjustments. So, we felt it was the more prudent outcome.
Barb, did I answer your question?
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions? Comments? Ready for the vote? The amendment is to move to amend the motion that parcel 12, except for the roadway portions, be rezoned to CF dash OS. Oh, Councilmember.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Keith, do the mic.
Councilmember, yes.
Was all of parcel 12 a mitigation site? Was the section C, was any mitigation done there?
So, I've walked it.
Good.
And my, I don't know for sure. So, what has happened north of the roadway, they basically took out some residences and created a wetland there. To the south of the roadway, there was some construction impact, so there was some plantings done south of the roadway. I'm not sure if that was part of a mitigation project or if it was simply Mountains to Sound doing wetland restoration work in our community adjacent to the creek. So, I don't know the answer to your question. It's a good one. I don't know the answer.
Okay, thanks. I have another one. Again, with that map, you can partially see where 62nd Street is. It kind of angles from right to kind of bottom left. And it crosses from orange into white. And all of that white, I really don't know where the river is based upon this map, but all of that white is currently recreation, open space recreation. Correct?
The white south of the C on the map is?
What about the, is that a different?
The white south of the A?
Yes.
I'm going to look at my planning staff. South of the road in the middle, that big piece of parcel?
That square?
Yeah.
Well, by the way, also, it spans both north and south of the roadway.
I've got a mouse. This area, sorry.
That's how CFR.
CFR.
And so, that spans both north and south of the roadway. So, it goes underneath that bridge.
Sorry, I was confering with my staff.
Saw that.
They acknowledged that the mitigation was all north of 62nd.
All right. Okay. And so, basically, there are two lots that are south, one south of C, one south of A are parcels, and they are currently open space recreation.
Yes.
Right. And I just want to point out too, that the one to the west?
Community facilities, sorry, recreation. Community facilities, recreation. You kind of blended.
Good, I did. I did. Recreation. Thanks, Trish. And the one to the west is, it's both south of 62nd Bridge and it's north. Just pointing that out.
Yes.
Okay. That's all I want to know. Thank you.
So, just to clarify, the amendment is that, if I'm not restating this correctly or not, Councilmember Goodman, but the small C down in the southeast corner, on the notes, it looks like it's CF dash R and the change is to also have that CF dash O. Is that the intent of the motion?
Yes.
Okay. Any other comments or questions?
Guess I just have one clarification.
Councilmember Ray first and then Councilmember Goodman.
This is a question. Is it typical or atypical to have a parcel with multiple zones on it?
It is not typical, but it's expressly allowed in the city code.
And how do you, what do we use then to formally draw those lines on the parcel?
So, we'll use our CAD and GIS to create that road prism and that will show up on the map. And the map then becomes the legal differentiation between those designations.
And what's the, what's the impact of having a non-conforming roadway on the parcel?
It might affect any reconstruction or expansion in the future. Might limit it. So, if you wanted to make it four lanes?
And today, it's okay because it's mixed use and the roadway is permitted in mixed use?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Any other questions or clarifications? We're still on the amendment to the motion. Okay. Councilmember De Michele.
Could you reread the amendment, please?
Sure. Move to amend the motion that parcel 12, except for roadway portions, be zoned CF dash OS. The net effect being where the small C is would not be CFR, it would be CFOs. Did you have a clarification, Councilmember Goodman?
Only that I seem to recall that the fee for changing the lines during one of our earlier presentations, and maybe it was the November 12 one, I didn't find it in any of the packets. However, I thought the fee was less than $5,000. I thought we heard something like $1,500, but I, maybe I misheard.
Any other questions about the amendment to the motion? All those in favor of moving to amend the motion so that parcel 12, except for roadway portions, be rezoned to CF dash OS, say aye.
Aye.
Do you raise your hand? Thank you. Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
That fails. Two to four. Onto the main motion. Any other questions or discussion? Councilmember Winterstein.
Appreciate staff's responsiveness. I know that both members of the public and, as you mentioned earlier, we weren't alone in raising that. I mean, it was brought to our attention in a very constructive way, so I appreciate your responsiveness to this. This is an outcome that I wanted as well. So, that's in terms of parcel 12 in particular. So, thank you.
Any other comments or questions or deliberations? Seeing none. All those in favor of the main motion, which is to adopt ordinance number two eight nine four, adopting by reference several amendments to the Issaquah Comprehensive Plan processed as part of the 2019 Comprehensive Plan and zoning map amendments, amending the land use element, the transportation element, the parks, recreation, open space and trails element, utilities and public services element, and the capital facilities element, and adopting by reference amendments to the city zoning map excluding comprehensive plan and zoning map amendments for the three parcels being acquired by the Issaquah School District in the Providence Heights neighborhood to be adopted by separate ordinance, providing for severability and establishing an effective date. Say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. That carries unanimously. Six to O. Council President Martz.
Meta Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance number?
Twenty eight ninety five.
Amending the land use designation map in the Issaquah Comprehensive Plan to change the designation of three parcels being acquired by the Issaquah School District on 220th Avenue Southeast from low-density residential to community facilities and rezoning the three parcels from single-family small lot, SFSL, to community facilities, facilities, CFF.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Council President Martz, would you like to open the dialogue?
Thank you, Meta Mayor. So, heard from a lot of folks tonight that feel very passionately about this subject on both sides. Before I get into this measure, I will, I will offer, at the risk of telling other people how to do their job, I would like the school district to be careful about this argument that big schools are inherently bad. And you won't be surprised to hear me say this because I've said it to a number of you up close. I think that Issaquah High is overcrowded and our other comprehensive high schools are overcrowded, but I come from Minnesota and Edina High School is 2,700 students, Wayzett is 3,000 students, Eden Prairie High School is 3,500 students. They're the three best public high schools in the state of Minnesota. So, if a fifth comprehensive, or sorry, if a fourth comprehensive high school gets built, this area is going to continue to grow and you will probably at some point be looking for a fifth comprehensive high school. Before you do that, I just, I was involved in VIS for years and I've been involved with schools for 20 years. I get that we like smaller schools in Washington State, but bigger schools, when they're designed to be bigger, offer better theater options, better science options, better after-school options, by lieu of their being the size that they are. So, I will move on to this particular issue. The heart of this issue is phased review and whether you accept that the phased review will work. There is a site plan permitting effort coming next year. The idea with phased review is you deal with the zoning piece now and you deal with the site plan when we have it, which we don't have. We have, people take, you know, there was a preliminary what-if meeting with the city early on. There's been stuff since then from the district, but we don't have a site plan in front of us. When we talked last week about future efforts to ensure that the solution that we come up with works for all sides, I don't believe we meant tonight. I believe we meant at that site plan permitting activity. As we've heard tonight, we can't put stimulation, stipulations on rezoning without a development agreement. We have already seen in the last few weeks evolution of the Issaquah School District's position with regards to buffers. I believe as this conversation continues in the public forum, we will see additional evolution as all sides involved seek to come to a conclusion that is necessary. We need a fourth comprehensive high school. This location has much to recommend it, but also very legitimate concerns in the community that can be addressed with proper planning and proper collaboration between all sides. But this body, if it moves forward tonight with this rezon, it should not be by anyone. And I don't, I don't believe the district would view it this way, but there are some in the community who would view it as a blank check. And if we move forward, it most certainly is not a blank check. Finally, the only way to move forward with the zoning is if we say that there is not a detrimental impact by the very act of rezoning. It was very telling to me that when the question was asked of the school district during the SEPA appeal, the question of how many, how many of the schools are adjacent to residential neighborhoods? And the answer was all of them. So, if, to say that a high school inherently, inherently have detrimental impact, you have to say that, well, how would you have any high schools anywhere? Or that there is something inherent to a senior community that makes it less amenable to other community facilities nearby? And I just, I believe that the district and the community can come up with a solution that all sides can live with in this particular situation, which is why I'm going to vote in favor of this this evening. Thank you.
Additional comments? Councilmember Ray.
I just have a question. I should, I know I should have answered this, asked this earlier when we were talking about conditioning because we were talking about conditioning, the zoning. What is the latitude during the master site development plan in terms of conditioning at that point? Because I think President Martz brings up an interesting question. So, what is our latitude at that point?
There are two components to that. One is that there will be an additional SEPA, a review, and that that may inform the ability to impose conditions. SEPA acts as an overlay over your permitting process. So, even if your criteria don't, or approving a master site plan don't dictate a condition, SEPA can be used to impose a condition. And then, of course, there are your master site plan criteria. And in order to meet the master site plan criteria, if you determine that conditions are necessary in order for those criteria to be met, then you would have the ability to impose conditions as part of the master site plan process.
Just to follow up, that's a quasi-judicial process for the council and they are allowed to do conditions in it?
Yes, in a, because that is a development permit approval. It's not zoning. It is a development permit approval and you are allowed to condition development permits.
So, what's our latitude in terms of conditioning permits? I mean, is it broad? Is it narrow? Where is it defined? How do we know what our boundaries are?
Well, I didn't review the master site plan criteria before sitting here tonight, but we could look at those. You have the authority to look at the master site plan approval criteria and impose any conditions you feel are necessary in order for those criteria to be met. So, you have broad authority in a master site plan to determine conditions that are necessary in order to meet approval conditions.
May not be appropriate attorney question, but at what point in the process does master site plan come forward in terms of an investment by an applicant in preparing all that information? Then to have it come to a council in a quasi-judicial setting?
It is my understanding that the master site plan review process will come forward. First, the applicant has to file a master site plan, then their application, then there needs to be SEPA prepared on it. And there are opportunities to have input at the SEPA level even if the, even if the school district is the SEPA responsible official. And then it comes forward to, I believe, the development commission and then to the city council.
Thank you. Questions? Councilmember Winterstein.
It may just be the first of many, not all at once. So, I actually would like to ask a question about the appeal that we just accepted, the findings of facts and conclusions for. And just, and since that's decided, I'm hoping the attorney representing staff can actually give an answer to council tonight.
You have adopted your findings and conclusions, so I believe that is done.
And if I recall correctly, all of the elements of that appeal were procedural in nature?
Well, SEPA is a procedural, procedural determination. And yes, the challenges were primarily to procedures. They weren't relating to the substantive impacts. My understanding is that Mr. Aramburu during that proceeding, there was a, there was, I believe, a, one of the issues was 3.5 or 3.6 and it dealt with, it dealt with the significant impacts and that the understanding that we had going into that hearing was that that condition or that issue was not going to be raised at this time and that it would be deferred until later SEPA proceedings without waiving any of, any of the Providence Point's rights relating to that. That's my understanding.
Yeah, that's consistent with my understanding as well. And the reason I ask the question is that, of course, for rezon, there's a different standard that we're looking at. And thank you, Jim. It was commented tonight that maybe we haven't received any information about that whole concept of being materially detrimental. And in fact, we have from you. Thank you very much. And so, this rezon consideration, the reason I asked that question was, was there anything in the whole SEPA appeal process that maybe got to that question or a claim, or at least made a claim that such a rezon was materially detrimental? And I, and I think the answer to that is no. You were about to say something.
I think you could certainly argue, and I'm sure Mr. Aramburu would argue and the Providence Point folks would argue, that, that many of the things that they were talking about in terms of noise, light, glare, and those types of things indicate a materially detrimental, have a materially detrimental effect on their properties.
But, but that wasn't the purpose of that appeal. And in fact, I don't believe there's really anything in that record either that makes that case. And actually, I'd open the floor to my colleagues if they, if they're familiar with the material there. What I'm looking for is where might a case have been made specifically that this rezon was materially detrimental?
Certainly, there was information submitted by the Providence Point Umbrella Association during the development commission hearings where they made those points on the rezon issues.
During that hearing?
So, yes, during that hearing, they did make those points and they raised many of the issues relating to traffic, light, glare, noise, et cetera, during the development commissions hearing, or excuse me, the planning policy commissions hearing on the rezon. Yes.
All right. I appreciate that. All right. So, I'm just going to make question slash comment, I guess, much as anything. All right, so I'm just going to make question slash comment, I guess, much as anything. This is a really difficult decision, actually not the one I was hoping to be my last decision, but. I honestly came here uncertain. And however, there were comments tonight that had a big impact on me. And in fact, and I won't name names, but the nature of those comments were, and you probably will remember them as well, many times it was said, something to the effect, I'm looking at my notes, what comments, I mean, that we can work this out. That I'm sure there's a solution. We just have to work it out. Hold them accountable and we can work this out. And even some of the leadership from the Providence Point community made comments like that. That really, that rang really loud to me, that there was belief that in the body of work so far considered for a potential school here and the people doing that representation for the purposes that they said, that members of the Providence Point community, including some of the leadership, believed, you know, we could work this out. There may be a solution here. We can work this out. Whether it be, and they didn't, nobody named specific impacts, whether it would be noise, light, traffic, what have you, but there was a belief that we could work this out. And I really did appreciate that because, because I think it is congruent with many of the comments also made about the belief in doing what's right for our children, for our future. It's a really tough place to be, to believe that and to feel that maybe you're being impacted by something that you don't want. But then I heard, I think we can work this out. We have to be able to work this out. And those are words of optimism. And my goal right now, before I leave this chair tonight, is find that, find a way to get that path and make that path happen. Because I also do believe that there can and should be an acceptable solution where, for both the neighborhood that's there and for the school district. So, and I don't know what that is exactly with a rezone, and I'm not sure that we can do that. Or, I'm not, and I actually asked City Administrator Bob Kowitz earlier today, and thank you for getting back to me on that. But one of the ideas, and I think we are being used, being viewed somewhat as an arbiter. There's a landowner, there's an adjacent landowner. And what can the city do to, to make sure that it is worked out appropriately? I'm very interested in, in that SEPA lead agency role, potentially, that the city, you know, could play that role. I don't know how you do that tonight, but I do want the city to be involved, if at all possible, in that way. And of course, knowing that there's still a master site plan that's required, but it's the lead agency, and I heard some basic asks for that tonight as well. Could we play that role? So those are some comments for everybody to think about. I want to throw some data at you as well as part of my consideration. And one of the tones and messages I listen to carefully is about the impact of the stadium. And I get it. I live on Squawk Mountain. In fact, on Friday nights, I know when there's a home football game because I can hear the band. Sound travels that way. Not, and, but, but here's the thing I'm going to ask people to think about. You know how many, how many home varsity games there were for Isiqua High this year? There were four or five a year. There's four or five a year. In fact, that stadium is also used for JV football. It's also used for girls soccer, girls JV soccer. It's used for boys and girls track, and it's also used for cross-country. There are 33 to 37 events there every year, and there are four or five that are boys football. Is soccer and track and cross-country educational? Absolutely. Matter of fact, my family's benefited from that tremendously. It is, it is in many different ways. It's an educational opportunity, both mentally and physically. It is a direct contribution and a benefit to the development of our children. And, and so I'm sharing that with you because I'm not considering the impact of the stadium just through, someone said tonight, testosterone. That's not it. That's a small portion of that use. That's the only, I cannot use just that lens to look at my consideration for the impact of the stadium. There are some serious, both boys and girls, from ages 14 to 18 at a high school level, that a stadium like that contributes to the, to the education and welfare of our students.
Thank you. Other comments? Councilmember De Michele, Councilmember Ray.
Okay. So as you might, I think we all know, this is kind of an agonizing decision. And I was told last time that my voice doesn't carry very well. Can you all hear me? Okay. So, so I've been kind of struggling with it over the weekend and thinking about it and realizing that there's not a solution that's going to be happy for everybody. Can we put the map back up of the three parcels? As you might have guessed from my question, I have severe concerns about the Planning Policy Commission proposal. I do believe it would put the city at jeopardy. I also think that it doesn't solve the problem for Providence Point. It puts a buffer up there, number three, that helps the parcels that are along there, but it does nothing to protect the people who live on the border of two and one. And it also would restrict the school district from ever being able to sell that property at the price that they paid for it originally. So that leaves me with do-nothing, a single-family, small lot, which would allow for an elementary school. And I am, I'm speculating here. I have not had this discussion with the school district, but first of all, it would be devastating to the school district if that were the result, if that was what we voted to do. But knowing the school district, I would presume that they would pull up their socks, build an elementary school, and they would then sell the rest of the property to a developer. And it'd be prime property for people who are wanting to live right next to an elementary school. So that doesn't solve the transportation problems, that doesn't solve the construction problems, that doesn't solve the noise problems. And then we have the CFF designation, and we've all discussed the issues there, lights and transportation and noise. And so I go back to what Councilmember Winterstein said and what many people in the audience said. There's, there's no really happy solution here for, for one set of people. It's going to be a long process that we're going to have to slog out and figure out how we're going to make this work the best we can. The CFF designation does give protection. The, the school district has said that they will put in a 60-foot average, and I hear the word average, buffer that goes around, which is, I think, much more suitable than the Planning Policy Commission proposal. It gives everybody around the edge a buffer and some vegetation and trees to limit the noise and help with the site views. I have lived, as well as Councilmember Winterstein, I live right across from Isiqua High School. And again, yes, on Friday nights, I can hear the noise. And so we need to work on that together, but it is only a few nights out of the year when you can hear that. So I will support the designation of CFF. I also believe, without a doubt, and I would really appreciate it if we could share the letter we got from the real estate, the person who has done the land searches for the district. I think that that was an excellent discussion of the process they've gone through to find land. I really do believe that there are no other more attractive or even buildable pieces of property right now. So anyway, I will support the CFF designation.
Thank you. Additional comments? I think I have Councilmember Ray next, followed by Walsh.
There is a couple of things that I think are absolutely not under dispute tonight. One is finding a 40-acre parcel of land inside the urban growth boundary is nearly impossible. So kudos to the school district for finding one and procuring it. Also, I think the other thing that's really not under dispute is that we need more space for our kids and that overcrowding has an impact on well-being and education. And I was, I gotta just do a little personal thing. Both my kids are products of the Isiqua School District, Sunny Hills, Pine Lake Middle, and Skyline. And so it was really not surprising to me, listening to people talking who are associated with those schools, to think that, you know, you turned out some great kids. They're, they're both doing great and I'm proud as can be of both of them. And it's a, in large part, a testament to the Isiqua School District. So I think that's, that's all a given. That being said, I think, I think I heard some pretty amazing things today. I heard someone say, be creative in, in challenging situations, and I think that's what we need to do. And someone else said, Francie said, it's about compassion, respect, and teamwork. If we do this together, we can figure it out. And then I loved, it was Anya's, who said, consider the real needs of the kids. So where I'm coming from, which is a little bit different, is I think that there's a solution. I, I think it's one where we have to come together and figure this out. As I read IMC 18.7.660, which is the approval criteria for master site development plan, essentially, and I can read it if you want, but we have very little, very little latitude on what we can condition at that point. And, and then there's the SEPA, and we're not the lead agency on SEPA. And so I have nothing but respect for the school district and their integrity and that they will do a great, incredible job with the SEPA. I have nothing but respect and confidence in the integrity of the school, that they will do a good job with the site development plan. That being said, I would feel more comfortable if we could take the time that we have, because we don't have to take action tonight, and that we continue the dialogue and we take advantage of the fact that the residents of Providence Point and the school district and the city of Isiqua have all expressed an interest to come together and work together and find that solution that will work for everyone. And as we were hearing public comment this after, or this, I guess it's this evening now, or tonight, you know, I understand, we come here with a lot of passion on both sides of this issue, but I heard so many comments that were made today on both sides of this very, very difficult issue, where I think everyone's hand should have gone up in the air because we all agree on so much of what we're talking about. We agree on far more than we disagree on. And so to my, my colleagues here, let us take the time to figure this out. Let us take the time to have this discussion for a few more weeks because we can, so that we can come up with a solution that is courageous and will result in something that people can say, yeah, maybe it's not everything I wanted, but you know what, it's a darn good solution. And that's what good neighbors do. And that's what we want to be as good neighbors. So that's my ask of the City Council this evening.
It's member Walsh.
Thank you.
No clapping.
So I want to take a moment just to say how much it's meant to me to hear the community come out. And what I have heard from a lot of the Providence Point folks is that they don't feel like they're being heard. They don't feel like the city and the school district are seeing them and hearing them and paying attention to the impacts that they will see and the, the comments that they have made. And so my, my thought process going forward is that while I would love to have time for more conversation, I would love to have that, come up with that magical plan that is going to bring the community together. I'm not sure I've seen that on the part of certain parties involved to be willing to make sacrifices in response to the community. And that may just be my feeling from this, but I have not felt like there is, there is something that can come from taking that time. And so I am hesitant to push that needle forward and not have it come up with anything other than more conversation. Because I think we've heard pretty firmly where, what is important to both sides. So I would be hesitant on that. If there was an indication that that was going to make that difference, all for it. I think the decision tonight is much about the idea of phased review, as Council President Martz said, and the idea that, yes, there are obvious things that can come up with an impact of any development. And the idea of the master site plan as the ability to mitigate those individual impacts, I think are important. What I would want to know, I think we had a community member email and say that there was an opportunity for the city to potentially be the, I'm going to have to go back over to the email to find that, yeah, the lead agency on the SEPA, which would give us potentially more opportunity to be involved in that going forward. So I think my question in trying to figure out where, what our options are, is that an option?
So I'll take a stab at it and then I'll call a friend. That sounds like a condition. And I think what you heard is that if you want to approve the rezone with a condition, you need a development agreement, of which that could be a condition.
Okay. So then let me continue on that conversation of what does it take to get a development agreement? What, what are the timelines on that? And is that something that we've ever done with a school district before?
So, Jim? Calling the friend now.
I'll phone a friend too and have Mr. Niven come up. But my understanding, at least under state law, is that a development agreement requires at least one public hearing before the City Council. And it has to be agreed to by both parties. So it is something that if we were to, to do a development agreement, it would take that. Are there, but I'm trying to recall the Isiqua municipal code and the...
So PPC needs, it needs to go through PPC or through D, or through DC? We've taken them through both.
And that would be difficult, I think, given the, to go through that process, given the requirement to consider all of your comprehensive plan and rezone amendments together, to separate them out and then...
With a development agreement then, does it still have to go through the contiguous comprehensive plan amendment process? It doesn't become a kind of separate entity and timeline?
Well, you certainly can do it separate. You can do a development agreement separate, you can do it in conjunction with a master site plan approval, you can do a development agreement. You don't necessarily need to couple it with the rezone and comprehensive plan amendment, but if you were to couple it with the rezone and comprehensive plan amendment, that probably means delaying it for a considerable amount of time.
Can you give them some bounds on considerable?
So development agreements are, are open range. So you can, you can be as specific as just, you know, them giving us, them not taking SEPA authority. So basically, they could defer SEPA lead agency to the city if they wanted to. It's within our jurisdiction. We would have it unless they take it. If they want to take it, they get it because they're a higher government. So they could, that could, it could be, that could be a one-page agreement that's executed by both parties.
Actually, you don't need a development agreement to, to have an agreement on SEPA jurisdiction. What SEPA says is that, that when a government agency... What SEPA says is that, that when a government agency initiates a proposal, that the, that government agency is the SEPA lead agency. It does, however, say that with agreement, two agencies can, two agencies that share in the implementation of a proposal can agree on who the SEPA lead agency is. So, if ordinarily, under SEPA, the district as the proposer of a master site plan or development of the site would be the SEPA lead agency. That's what SEPA's default is. If the city and the district agree otherwise, then the city could be the lead agency for the proposal, but it would take the district's agreement to do that. That doesn't require a development agreement. That simply requires an agreement under SEPA.
I'm going to let Councilmember Walsh follow up or finish up on that question, and then I saw Councilmember DeMichele and Councilmember Goodman.
So, I will follow up to say that there is so much more to say on this, but I think this presents an opportunity for conversation, and so I think we should leave that on the table.
Councilmember DeMichele.
Okay. During my campaign, I repeated over and over and over, I spent 17 years at King County Department of Transportation, and so, sorry to say it again, but my job was to work with communities and, and work through a project. And in my experience, it is not easy to come to a conclusion when you're dealing with theoreticals. It is much easier to come to an agreement in a community if you do, if you've done the studies, if you've done the detailed drawings. People begin to, it's, I, I've always compared it to a Polaroid picture. It starts off being very, very blurry, and then slowly, slowly, slowly comes into focus, and then more and more into focus until you have a picture. And it, that process, to me, is one that we really can't start until we approve this zone change, so that the school district, or if it turns out to be us, the, the city, can start to do those studies that we have to do for the SEPA checklist, and start to move that forward and communicate, communicate, communicate with the people who are the stakeholders. And that's not just Providence Point. The stakeholders here are the parents, the kids, the people that use 228. We have a lot of stakeholders on this project. We have to involve all of them in thinking about how we're gonna move forward. But to be working with theoreticals, you, that, whatever magical plan you come up with is going to change, because so much is learned through the environmental studies that are conducted, and then through the site plan that's developed, and all of the work that is done to pull that vision into a concrete place. And so, I think delaying it, we're just kind of hoping that we'll get a good plan. And I think if we move forward and really work the process, we will, we will get a good plan. But it's gonna have to be feet on the ground, people really knowing what the facts are before we get that far.
Thank you. Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you. So, somebody said tonight, when they were speaking to us, that it, you know, shouldn't be an either/or, and that's kind of what this discussion, what the decision is set up to be tonight. I would be all in favor of providing some more time for the parties to talk, because they have been, they have talked. And there are indications that they are speaking strictly about the school district and Providence Point Umbrella Association, maybe beginning to understand each other a little better. And so, the opportunity to understand each other even more before we're put in a position of making a decision that's an either/or is something that I am very interested in, because I think that makes for a better outcome for us as we start down this long road, because this isn't the end, it would be the beginning. It doesn't have to be a development agreement. It could be some sort of an agreement, you know, it could be some sort of a settlement agreement between the school district and Providence Point Umbrella Association and the city. So, we don't have, it wouldn't have to be something that identifies every single teeny-tiny thing. I think the Providence Point folks have a very good idea about what their, what their concerns are, and an opportunity to talk to the district about what would make them more comfortable moving forward is a much more enviable position for all of us to be in. The, and Jim knows this, it's always a better outcome when people voluntarily agree to something than when something is imposed. I don't think that we have to get all the way down to the master site plan process in order for the parties to come together and figure out what they might be able to agree on now. The worst-case scenario, if we wait until after the new year to take this up again, the worst-case scenario is that there's not an agreement. But yet, everybody at least understands each other a little bit better. We have the opportunity to do that. This is not a rush. School district does not own the property yet. I don't know where they are in the eminent domain process. There may be, I don't know, they would have to answer this, but it appears that maybe there's some issue that's out there, that there's a stay, and so, maybe this is going, the ownership issue is gonna go on a little bit longer. But they've been able to do 50 or more iterations of their plans with just having possession and use. So, there isn't, there is not a rush. There is not an emergency. We have, at the very least, a few weeks to allow the parties to come together and talk. And I think that would be better, that would be better than us coming up with a decision tonight that is an either/or, which I think is not a good position to be in. So, I would be interested in that. Somebody mentioned, "We all need to sacrifice." I do want to say that, that from the district parent side, we have heard about overcrowding. And everybody up here, I'll say it again, you know, you don't need to tell us again. We know there's overcrowding. I think almost all of us have had our kids in Issaquah schools. But I think what really struck me during the testimony last week was that with all of the concerns about overcrowding, what's being cut? Classrooms. So, if the parents in the district and the students in the district think that this site and building a new high school is going to relieve overcrowding in a very meaningful way, then I would be concerned that you rely on that. Because what's not being cut is anything like a stadium or any of the sports facilities. What's being cut is classrooms. And so, I think that, that is very concerning to me, and it should be very concerning to folks in the district who are looking at this new high school as relieving overcrowding. The bond in 2016 passed with over 70%, it was 71-something. I looked up today. And I think a year and a half later, the resolution was changed so that the district could raise the old administration building and buy a new building to locate the administrative, the administrations buildings. My understanding is that there is plenty of space in that building for growth, maybe even entire vacant floor. So, my question to the district is, if you can provide extra space for your administrative staff, why are you not building schools with additional classrooms so that you can plan for the future? So, that is the reality. We're planning for growth at the administrative level. We are not planning for growth with additional classrooms. We're actually cutting them. So, I will go back to what I said in the, the beginning of this, and that is that I would support extra time for the parties to come together and at least potentially have some agreement about the issues that are the most important to the people who are involved in the, in the, in this process here, which is the Providence Point folks. Separately from that, I just want to mention that it is a concern of mine that we had three, the rezon required hearings. We had hearings over three different meetings for the Planning Policy Commission. And it's my understanding, because I looked at the packets and I've, and I can confirm that with Mr. Haney and Mr. Niven and Trish Hanen, and that is that the materials that the council has had before us tonight with the, what we are supposed to consider, was though, none of those materials were before the Planning Policy Commission. So, I would be concerned that we did not give the public a fair opportunity to comment at those hearings. One of the options would be to remand this back to the Planning Policy Commission. My, I would believe that our legal counsel might have a concern about that. If we deliberate over the course of two years, that we would be precluded from having additional, additional complaint docket next year. That would be, that would be an issue. But allowing the parties to just come together between now and then is not an issue. So, the, I, I forgot what I was gonna say. Lucky for you all. I'm gonna stop.
Any other comments? Any more deliberations? I'm checking my notes and thinking, everybody has talked at least once on this topic. I did speak with our, our legal counsel, Mr. Haney, and believe that the school district has spoken with our Director of Development Services about a potential co-lead on the SEPA.
There is a procedure under SEPA where parties by agreement may agree to share lead agency status. When you call, you call that co-lead agency status. The parties enter into an agreement, they act as co-lead agencies, they make decisions together on matters of substance. One agency serves as nominal lead agency for purposes of sending out notices and, and things of that nature, but the, the two agencies act in concert. And my understanding is that, that may be something that may be agreeable to the district.
So, that was some additional information I wanted to provide you. Are there any questions? Council President Martz, Councilmember Winterstein.
In such a situation, were there to be an appeal? Where would the appeal go?
Well, we would agree upon that. That is how, we would have to agree that the way that, the way that the, the way that the regulations read is that it says that two agencies may agree to divide up the responsibilities of the lead agency. So, we would have to agree on that. But I would suggest that because the city would be holding the open record hearing on the, on the SEPA appeal and the, and the, and on the master site plan, that it may be appropriate for the city to hold that SEPA appeal hearing. But that's something that has to be agreed to in the agreement.
Part two would be, would that be with a hearing examiner or with the Issaquah City Council? Not that I don't enjoy seeing Mr. Aramburu on a regular basis.
Well, unfortunately, under your current code, although we do have the ability to amend the code, under your current code, the hearing would be before the Development Commission and not before the city council. SEPA requires that you consolidate the open record hearing on any SEPA appeal with the open record hearing on the underlying governmental permit. And since it is the Development Commission in a master site plan that holds the open record hearing, that would ordinarily be where, where it goes. You could amend your code in order to provide, then, in the event of a SEPA appeal, that jurisdiction would be transferred to the hearing examiner, but currently, it would go to the Development Commission.
Thank you.
Jim, just to clarify one thing, I thought, under master site plan, that the city council was the open hearing.
I believe that under master site plan, the Development Commission holds the hearing and makes a recommendation, and the city council makes the final determination.
Thank you. Councilmember Winterstein.
We do this a lot.
We know, and I know that you were part of facilitating the parties getting together, and I don't know how much of that can or should be discussed publicly, if any. Okay. Okay. I'm aware of effort, and we're still where we are this evening. I also have seen a letter from the superintendent stating intent, I think it was a real progression, that we all know about the 60-foot buffer zone, because that's, that's new. That's, that is in reaction, my judgment's in reaction to what's happened here in other forums. It's a good sign. I like what I heard a moment ago. This is one of those moments, I, I don't believe there's, from, from what, from what happened earlier, I'm not convinced that just making more time for the parties to get together is gonna benefit either party. And I also heard that there is optimism that a solution can be found. And I really want, like I said earlier, I would want this city to have some role in this, one that's obviously legal. And, and if we're invited as a co-lead, that would be, that would be acceptable to me. That would be, and I think essential, I think, I think there is, there are three parties here, but there's really more, many more.
Many more.
And the city's continuing involvement as co-lead of SEPA. I think it would be a demonstration of ours, and I think the school district's intent to be responsive to our constituents. So, I'm, I am going to support the motion and take a leap of faith and trust that what was shared with us this evening will come about in terms of a co-lead of SEPA.
Any other comments before I come back to Council President Martz? Council President Martz.
So, folks in the audience at home may notice, there's actually six council members up on the dais, and seeing a certain amount of flux in comments from folks in the dais, it's probably worth understanding what happens if we get to a 3-3 vote.
Definitely. So, we could talk a little bit of process before, and that doesn't mean you have to stop deliberations or stop talking with each other, but we do only have six council members today. The motion that's on the table right now is to approve the rezoning of the three parcels to CFFF. I've noted down that I heard two other options as well. One was remand back to the PPC, not echoed very far and wide, but it was an option. Another was to take this action and continue it to another date, allowing some time, and that amount of time would have to be specified. If the vote on the current motion goes forward, and it's a 3-3 tie, in Roberts' Rules of Order, that is a fail. That means the motion does not pass. You need to have four votes of the six tonight to pass. The mayor has an option in certain limited circumstances, and this is one of them, to break a tie vote. But as we know, over these last months, as we've heard about this project and the conversations in the community, it played a very different role than maybe other mayors had in trying to bring parties together and trying to find compromises and options that we could present during a rezon vote that might make the council see more certainty in what their vote meant this evening. That did not come to fruition, but during that process, I had many, many, many conversations with different community members, school board members, school board staff, and saw a lot of information that has not been made publicly available. I do not feel it's appropriate in that situation, since I did not participate in the ex parte communication statement that you all made, that I should break the tie. So, I really feel it's up to this body tonight to vote and stand by the tie if you want, or, and I'm looking over at my parliamentarian to see what, or Jim, to see what the other options might be in terms of what asking for an extension might look like. Jim?
First of all, Mayor, the action before the council is an ordinance, and the mayor cannot break a tie on an ordinance. Sorry to correct you, but, but that, that is the, the law. You could break a tie on a motion to postpone, because that is purely a procedural motion, but you cannot break a tie on the ordinance itself. And state law requires that a majority of the council, that is, four votes, be in favor of any ordinance if you're gonna pass an ordinance. So, you need four votes to pass. Regardless of Roberts, you do need that. For state... Regardless of Roberts, you do need that for state law as well.
Any more deliberation discussion? Councilmember Goodman.
What's a motion to postpone look like? What does...
Well, under Robert's rules, you can move to postpone consideration of the current motion on the floor to a date certain. And that, for example, the motion would be, I move to postpone consideration of this matter to January 20, whatever, that meeting, 21st, the meeting of that. That is a motion to postpone the matter, and that's what it looks like. It's a subsidiary motion, and it essentially takes precedence over the main motion on the floor. It has to be voted on. And then if that passes, the matter is postponed to that night. If that fails, then the matter continues to be on the floor. The main motion continues to be on the floor.
Councilmember Goodman.
I would like to make a motion to postpone the motion, or this matter, I guess, the motion that's on the floor, to... What's that meeting date? Is that the second regular meeting to January 21, for the purpose of providing an opportunity for continued dialogue?
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. Councilmember Goodman.
I made the motion because I actually see zero downside, and I only see an upside. And as I said before, it is always better for people to voluntarily agree than to have things imposed. The worst-case scenario is that, like I said before, the worst-case scenario is that there is no agreement. The best-case scenario is there is some agreement, and that gets us a better process, because we have people who then feel that they have heard. I understand that there's a lot of people in the community who have an interest in this. I'm speaking of parties with a capital P. I'm talking about the folks who have appealed, and the school district who has an interest in the land, and the city who's involved in the process. And I'm not suggesting that there are other people who are interested. But I just, I really see zero downside. I understand that there are probably desires to get this done by the end of the year. Think of it this way, Paul, you wouldn't have to decide at the end of your council career, but maybe there's a desire to. I understand that. We also would have a full slate of council members up here, seven, not six. So I am not one who likes to kick cans down the road, and that is not the purpose of this. I really, as Jake's rolling his eyes at me, really the purpose is to give an opportunity for people to have more conversation. That's the reason.
Councilmember Walsh.
So what kind of legally... Legal agreement, or something that is legally defensible, could come out of a conversation between the capital P parties? Because I'm not a lawyer. I don't know if I'm looking at you or somebody else, but...
Probably, Jim. What... You want to know what the deliverable is and if it can be done in a certain period of time? Is that what you're asking?
Yes, and who the agreement would be.
Between.
Between, and whether or not we would then have enforcement abilities, or what that looks like.
The agreement can be between all three parties, if all three parties can reach agreement. That is between the Providence Point Umbrella Association, the city, and the school district. There's certainly been discussions about such an agreement in the past. It has not, we have not reached agreement. There could also be an agreement simply between the school district and the city. Certainly, the SEPA agreement relating to co-lead agency status would be between the city and the school district, as opposed to between all three parties. So that can take any permutation that an agreement can take. That doesn't necessarily mean it's a development agreement. It would be binding on whoever signed it, and not necessarily bind the property like a development agreement would. But that may not be as much of an issue, since the school district is the party most associated with schools. I suppose there could be private schools, there could be other schools that might be built on the site. But if the school district was bound by this, they would be bound whether it bound the property or not. So any of those permutations is available, as far as an agreement's concerned.
Does that answer your question, Councilmember Walsh?
Yes.
Thanks. Councilmember DeMichele.
If we delay, what does that mean for the schedule that the school district has for schools? I am understanding that this would push it back by another year. That's my understanding. If we could get some clarification, I'd appreciate it.
That's a good question. We have heard that. And I think, Jim, this evening you gave us an answer that that might not necessarily be the case.
It doesn't necessarily push the comprehensive plan amendment and rezon to next year's cycle, as long as you did it in the beginning of the year and made sure that you were still considering the cumulative impacts of the school district rezones, along with the impacts of the comprehensive plan amendments that you had passed.
Okay, now, that wasn't exactly my question, but I wasn't being clear. If we delay this vote until January 21st, how does that impact the school district's ability to get this school up and running by 2022? That's what I'm asking. Maybe the school district needs to answer that.
I'm not the person to ask that question.
City Administrator Bobquitz? Are you suggesting that we bring someone up to the microphone to answer that?
Yes.
Okay, great, thanks. School district, I'm assuming. Superintendent would be great.
Ron Thiele, Superintendent Isiqua School District. The hard part for us is to know how long the delay is. We have 30 months from right now, the way I see it. And so any delay makes me nervous. I'm feeling already under the gun. Certainly, we would... The concern I also have is, so what if we don't reach an agreement by the 21st? Now, we do roll, as I understand it, and I'm really impressed by your ability to follow this, because it is pretty confusing, we could then be pushed back a year. And that's what really concerns me. I've spoken numerous times and written about the urgency that's in front of us now. I do really appreciate the opportunity, though, and the dialogue that's here, and I hope that you do see our willingness to work with you, work with the neighbors as well.
Thank you, Ron, but you've gone a little bit beyond the answer. Thank you.
I had to take advantage of my opportunity at the mic.
There you go. Hence why I'm cautious about inviting people up to the microphone. Council President Martsch.
So I'm going to oppose this amendment. I stand by what I said to begin with, which is, we have a phased review process. The city set about a phased review process in accordance with SEPA. I want to continue to trust the SEPA ability to work solutions as the law is designed for. I continue to believe that changing the issue in front of us tonight, I appreciate that we all want to try to help the parties involved come to a solution, but the issue in front of us is whether to go to change the zoning, and I believe that we clearly should change the zoning. So I'm going to oppose the amendment.
Thank you, Council President. Councilmember DeMichele.
Just very briefly, I think it's important to note that it's very difficult for a school district to open up a school in mid-year. They either started in September, or it's another year. It's a really hard thing to assign staff, to, you know, where the transportation, where the parents' plans, all of those things. It's a very complicated thing, and so starting schools in September is the ideal, and it's very difficult to do it if it's not... It's very difficult to contemplate opening a school in mid-year.
Thank you, Councilmember DeMichele. Councilmember Ray.
So what I believe has been suggested is essentially a four-week delay in making this decision. And I'm not seeing that there's another delay beyond that. This is a four-week delay over the holiday season, where I don't know how the school district operates, but every other organization I've ever been part of, not a lot gets done the last two weeks of the year. So I think what we have is essentially a two-week impact. So sure, if I was the superintendent, I'd be nervous as all get out, too, because it's hard in any schedule. I just think that the investment of two weeks to see if we can come up with something, so we can be creative, so that we can focus on what is in the best interest of all of the stakeholders, and there may be all the parties with a capital P, but I believe that there's a solution to this. And I've had conversations with a number of people associated with both sides of this issue, and I fundamentally believe that we can solve this if we choose to solve this and do it in a way that will work for all the parties. And I'd like to give that a chance before saying up or down on the zoning, which I don't really know how that's going to go. So, you know, I would like to give ourselves a little more time. Let's work this a little bit. We're talking about second meeting in January to come back, date certain, and make a decision. I don't think that's a huge investment of time. When it became apparent, I guess, over the weekend, that we had some latitude to move into 2020, make this decision, I think that was a gift, and I don't want to not take advantage of the time, because I think we were all feeling a bit of pressure to get this issue resolved. And I don't always think you make your best decisions when you're feeling a bit of pressure. So I would like to, you know, move this out, give ourselves a little bit of time to think about it, give the parties a little bit of a chance to explore some different ideas, and then come back and make our decision, whatever it may be, and then get moving, and let the school district get on with the important business that they have of building schools and educating kids and doing amazing stuff.
Thank you, Councilmember Ray. Other comments? Councilmember Walsh.
So I don't like the idea of a delay, because I'm just not confident that an agreement can be made, nor do I necessarily think that's what's necessary at this point in this stage, because we are looking at zoning. I think the part that interests me is the ability to come to an agreement where we are the co-lead on the next stage of SEPA. And I think that, to me, is worth having a delay, if that is potentially what we can get out of it. So for that reason, I would support the amendment.
Motion? Substitute motion. There we go. Yeah. Additional comments? Councilmember Winterstein, and I think Councilman Goodman, you're last, or have you already spoken to this?
Well, I made the motion and I spoke, so...
Okay. Councilmember Winterstein.
Well, my status has nothing to do with any of this. The right way to go forward is independent of any one councillor's status. I was joking about that earlier. I agree with Stacy. There's nothing to... You've got 30 months, you've got 29 months, the decision will be made on the 21st. I'm going to support the delay, because I want that agreement that you talked about, understood ahead of time, and I want to encourage... I'm not sure, I'm not privy to what all that happened before, but I want the work to continue.
Is there any other comments for deliberation before we call for the vote on the substitute Do you have a version of the substitute motion?
The motion before the council is to postpone the motion on the ordinance to the January 21st regular council meeting to allow an opportunity for continued dialogue.
The motion to postpone the vote, I'm calling for the vote, on the motion to postpone this... Ah, I'm going to have a reading game. Look, it's terrible. It's like, it's all over the place. Okay, this is the motion, and then I'll call for the vote, because I couldn't keep up with her.
Postpone the motion on the ordinance to the January 21st regular council meeting to allow an opportunity for continued dialogue.
Thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
As opposed?
Nay.
The motion carries 4 to 2, and so this matter will be postponed to the January 21st meeting. We still have a couple of items for this evening. The last couple are good-of-the-order. Do council members have anything for good-of-the-order? Council President Martsch.
So I'll wait, wait just a moment for the crowd to disperse.
Or you can tell them to sit down. It's a big crowd.
It is a big crowd.
I can do my boring stuff.
Maybe, yeah, maybe if you can do...
I'm going to do the boring administrative stuff while the volume is a little high. Okay. Upcoming council meetings. January 6th is a regular council meeting, 7:00 PM. Under special business, there'll be the election of council president and deputy council president for 2020. There'll be swearing-in ceremony and oath of office for three of our council members. Potential agenda items include the website redesign project, there'll be an informational update, and the proposed 2020 budget... Oh, hang on. I got... Proposed 2020 budget revenue sources, cemetery fees, that is what's coming? Okay. Proposed 2020 budget revenue sources, cemetery fees. January 14th, there'll be a council study session at 6:30 in chambers. Potential agenda items are Old Town and Land Use Code amendments, mobility master plan update, Forest Carbon Credit Program. Quite a mix. Quite a mix. Council President Martsch.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I appreciate it. I just want to take a moment. I have known Councilmember Winterstein since before either of us were on council, and he has, he was my council deputy president for a year, he's my council president for two years. He is a remarkable public official, and I have been, I have just been so enriched to get to spend 10 years working with him on city issues. And the biggest compliment I can pay him is, I don't know anybody who loves this city more than Paul does. So Paul, thank you so much for your friendship and partnership up here on the dais for so long.
Very nice. Councilmember Walsh.
So I will chime in on that. I haven't known Councilmember Winterstein all that long, but, gosh, if there isn't anybody in this area that knows our budget better, knows all of the details, and can walk you through in just layman's terms, and the ability to really boil it down, that in addition to just your contribution to the city and our body as a council is just amazing. And I thank you very much for having done this, even in a short period.
Any comments? Councilmember Goodman.
I want to say, Paul, in a lot of ways, you and I kind of learned the ropes together. Been through some good, some bad, some kind of middle-of-the-road. Been through a lot together. Going to miss sitting next to you and being able to work with you, so I wish you all the best, and I'll see you around town.
Councilmember DeMichele.
Okay, I'll have to chime in, because I've known Paul for a long time as well, and he was very involved with the Together Center when we were looking to see if we could bring a human services campus to Isiqua. Got to know him there. I've always loved how Paul can ask just the right question, and I'm going to miss that a lot. And then we had that wild and crazy idea about a teen center. And Paul Antola and I were sort of the three musketeers there for a while, promoting it, and then luckily Kaylee Jake came along, and it's now a reality. But I've just appreciated your good humor, Paul, your, just your insights are always so keen, and I'm going to miss... I wish I'd had more time on the council with you. So thank you so much for your service.
Thanks, Paul.
Oh, and he's my twin brother, by the way.
That's right.
She's my twin sister.
We have the same birthday, but not the same year.
I was born first.
Anything else for good-of-the-order? Well, that was a long night, so we are adjourned. Well, that was a long night, so we are adjourned.
All right.